Good evening. This is the second session of the Winchester Fall Town Meeting. If you could now log into your V-Voter platform where we will take a roll call. So with 122 members of the town meeting having indicated their presence in the meeting, we've established a quorum, 7:34. We'll begin our meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance, placing our right hand over our heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We will return this evening to debate on Article 11. And then, following Article 11, we will go to Article 13 in accordance with our earlier motion to suspend the rules and take those out of order. So it will be 11, 13, 12, and then we'll return to the numerical order 14 and go forward from there. If we do not complete our work this evening, we'll come back on Thursday, November 12th for the final session of the meeting. So this brings us to the return of debate on Article 11. As you'll recall, Article 11 as originally drafted and proposed by the Select Board would prohibit the use of mechanical landscaping, including lawnmowers, by property owners. Prior to debate on Article 11, the Select Board made a motion to amend, as voiced by the Chair. The motion to amend passed, and we're now debating the amended Article 11. The text of that was read by the Chair and on a point of order at the end of the evening, brought by Mr. Gerius. The Chair agreed to continue the meeting over until this evening so that everyone now should have, through the email, received the Article 11 in its printed form as it has been amended. So we return to debate on Article 11, brought by the Select Board, represented in this instance by Amy Shapiro. This is a majority vote. So Roseanne Corrick has raised a point of order. Ms. Corrick?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. What's your point of order?
I wanted to move that we reconsider our action relative to Article 3.
Okay. So with respect to Article 3, just so it's clear, and I don't mean to discourage your motion, which will require a second and then will become either the last the last matter of business at this meeting if we end this evening, or if not, we'll come back to it on the first order of business at our next session. With respect to the reconsideration of Article 3, Article 3 asks for the conduct of the meeting using electronic technology and voting techniques, much like we are using this evening. So we are, in essence, locked into remote and electronic voting by virtue of the procedures and protocol that we find ourselves in for this meeting. So there won't be anything that undoes how we're conducting the meeting tonight. But for the spring meeting and the next meeting and the meetings beyond that, that will require a bylaw change. So what we voted on the other night under Article 3 was to continue the practices we're using this evening for these meetings, somewhat of a redundancy. And then in the spring, the proponents will be coming forward with a bylaw change that would make that procedure permanent. So I do think that even if we were to reconsider 3, it really, it would not preclude the proponents from proposing a bylaw change in the spring, and it wouldn't change anything as to this evening. I understand that there are debatable points with respect to the wisdom of the electronic procedure, but those are points that have been preserved by the kind of unique position we find ourselves in tonight. So I apologize for the prolix explanation, but I would just ask the town meeting member whether she still wishes to move forward with the motion for reconsideration.
I think if we are going to be entertaining a bylaw change in the spring, then I think we'll have an opportunity to bait all of the concerns that I had that I felt weren't really addressed on Thursday night's session. So I could withdraw at this time.
The Chair greatly appreciates that and concurs that there are substantive and material issues that deserve debate. And I'm confident that other town meeting members I've heard from as well, and your input, that that debate will take place in the spring at the time that the bylaw change is proposed. But Chair greatly appreciates your courtesy in withdrawing that motion. Sherry Winkelman on a motion to amend. Ms. Winkelman?
Hi, yes. Sherry Winkelman from Precinct 8. I find my statutory interpretation skills being stressed once again by this bylaw. Last, when we passed the construction noise part in town meeting, I had the same problems that I'm having now with the mechanical landscaping. And that's primarily to do with Section 2 and the whether or not only the property owner is allowed to work. How does this "not for compensation" clause fit in with all of that? I get, it seems like there's double negatives if you put in a "not." And I would, I actually think that it should be amended further than what it has been amended, at least for mechanical landscaping. And actually, it should be applied to construction landscaping as well, but that would probably be out of order. So I, I would like the Select Board to explain to me how this works with the current, with the proposed language for property owners. If, let's say you're renting the property, or you are the, say, the offspring of someone who no longer lives at the property but are helping out your, your parents trying to mow the lawn, any of those sorts of things. I just don't see how this language is very clear on how, how it affects those situations. Thank you.
In response to the town meeting members' question, Ms. Shapiro, and I'd also note that we have, fortuitously, Mr. Krieger, our Krieger Town Council, available to us this evening as well. Ms. Shapiro, in response to Ms. Winkelman's questions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So as to Ms. Winkelman's comments, so if you're not being compensated for work, this will not apply. The times that are being outlined in the article will not apply to you. So to the examples that you spoke of, they would not apply because they're not being compensated for that work. And Mr. Krieger, I don't know if you want to follow up on that at all?
Sure, this is Art Krieger. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The phrase "by a property owner," I think, can be read broadly. If one spouse, if the title to the house is in one spouse's name, no one, no one would say that the other spouse can't mow the lawn, that only the spouse on the deed can do it. If, so if a family member wants to do it on behalf of a property owner, I think that's probably okay. Is that as clear as it could be in this draft? No, but nobody's going to enforce it against a family member doing it "not for compensation" on behalf of the property owner.
I, I, I
Excuse me, Ms. Thank you, Mr. Krieger. So Ms. Winkelman, further on the question, do you have a further question?
Yes, I find, well, I, I find that response, I understand legally, the response to say that it would never be enforced against someone who is having someone help you out on your property. Are you, are we expecting our law enforcement officers to find out if somebody is working for compensation or not if they're called in? I just think that we should either not put this into an already poorly written bylaw and save it for the spring and rewrite that whole section, or write it properly now so it at least applies correctly to mechanical landscaping. So when I, as a person looking up the bylaws, can easily understand this, I see double negatives when I read it. So it sounds to me like the "not a property owner" and the "shall not include work performed by the property owner" and "not for compensation," those, those "not" seem to cancel out when I read it. And I think it might cancel out for a lot of people. So why make an already difficult-to-read ordinance even more difficult to read by adding in more sections?
Thank you, Ms. Winkelman. Further on the question, Mr. Simpson, Colin Simpson.
Mr. Simpson on Article 11. Yes, thank you. When we read this on the Government Regulations Committee, I objected to the language, the way it was written, and I don't think that the rewriting has improved it all that much. I think it, with the rewriting, it almost borders on not being in order because we pretty much flipped over "you can do it" to "you can't do it," or "you can do it" to "you can't do it." And so I would move that we indefinitely postpone this until the spring.
Is there a second to Mr. Simpson's motion? Mr. Conti seconding the motion. So this brings us to a subsidiary motion on Article 11, which calls for its indefinite postponement. If the matter is indefinitely postponed, it will not be taken up at this town meeting and will only be taken up if it is, again, placed on the warrant at a subsequent town meeting. The motion for indefinite postponement or to table the motion is debatable. Now, on the motion for indefinite postponement, brought by Mr. Simpson, Mr. Michelson.
Yes, Roger Michelson, Precinct 8. So I agree with the indefinite postponement. When we talked about this last week, we also brought up the use of having emergency crews that would have to come in if there were prelims that fell on your yard or in front of your house. I didn't see any changes in the warning for emergency or DPW use, you know, on your property as well. So I have concerns about that as well. So I agree with the indefinite postponement.
Further on the motion for indefinite postponement, Mr. Bettencourt.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just, just to be clear, I mean, we've been hearing about this for a long time, so much so that a member of the community actually was the one that moved forward the construction bylaw. It didn't come from us last year. We were trying to mirror that to respond to a lot of resident concerns that have come up recently. And certainly, we need to be clear and we need to be specific about what we're doing and not make errors. But, you know, the intent of this bylaw, it's not a regulatory scheme that we're creating. We're not sending police officers out to get kids that are, you know, mowing lawns for friends. It really is targeted at leaf blowers and weed whackers and lawnmowers that are starting very early in the morning, sometimes 5:00, 6:00 a.m., we've heard, and people have sent us videos of that. So I guess I wouldn't say that I mind so much that we indefinitely postpone it until the, the spring in the sense that it's November, in between now and the spring, there probably isn't going to be a lot of that activity. But we did receive quite a few of complaints from residents, and people are home more now, and people are also doing more work on their homes. So maybe it's intensified, but it's, it's been a problem for a long time. And we were really trying to provide a bylaw to the community that was the least restrictive possible. And sometimes I feel like we drill in a little bit too hard on the, the exact language where it, where it hasn't been confusing. The construction bylaw has worked very well, and we haven't had a single complaint or confusion from anyone that's affected by it from either direction. So just wanted to speak to that, and I don't want to further take up town meeting's time, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bettencourt, on the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 11. Mr. Gerius, on the motion for indefinite postponement of Article 11.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I urge people to support this, the indefinite postponement. I find it odd that we should wonder whether or not an article may or may not be applied. I think it should be clear enough that we know exactly to whom it applies. And in this case, it seems like changing the language to make it explicit is not an onerous thing. I, you know, as much as I usually agree with Mr. Krieger, this time I think the language is confusing, and I think we should get it cleaned up. Thank you.
Further on the motion for indefinite postponement, Mr. Rome, Nathan Rome. Mr. Rome, on the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 11.
Sorry, I don't see any reference to commercial landscape contractors. Are they covered elsewhere?
So Ms. Rome, this is on the motion for indefinite postponement, not on the main motion. Commercial landscaper contractors who are conducting mechanical landscaping within the definition would be subject to this bylaw. In fact, as amended, they would, in essence, be the primary targets of the bylaw. So property owners would be excluded, commercial landscapers would be included. Further on the question, Roger Wilson, Mr. Wilson, on the motion for indefinite postponement.
I would say that it's good enough to put into force now. The construction portion of it has worked well in my experience, and I think the target here is pretty clear. It's the commercial landscaper who drops in with three people running leaf blowers for 30 minutes any time during the day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson, speaking against indefinite postponement. The last speaker on the motion for indefinite postponement, Mr. Gay, on the motion for indefinite
Yes, just a couple of observations. One, indefinite, indefinite postponement, is that, that this article would be postponed indefinitely in the future, and it would not be brought up? And secondly, I just wanted to echo Chairman Court's remarks regarding that, is this a guideline for noise pollution in the town of Winchester? So this is, this is so, commercial-grade landscaping equipment would, would, would be allowed on the, you know, the hours that are written in the article?
Yeah, so in response to the town meeting members' question, indefinite postponement will result in no action on this article, and accordingly, there'll be no change made to the proposed bylaw. If indefinite postponement passes, we will end debate on Article 11, and the town meeting would only return to it if it were put forward at a subsequent town meeting by the Select Board or any other party eligible to put something on the warrant. And with respect to the question about the intent, as it's been amended, yes, it sets certain hours for the conduct of mechanical landscaping, which in essence is, as set forth in the bylaw, is carried out by those people doing so for compensation. So as is used colloquially, "commercial landscapers," and this would establish the time periods for that, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. weekdays, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Saturdays, and by, as permitted by state law, 9:00 to 5:00 on Sundays. So this brings us to the motion made by, made for indefinite postponement by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Mr. Conti. Majority vote. Please go to the V-Voter screen. If you vote yes, we will end debate on this and not consider 11. If you vote no, we will return to a vote in the main motion. Palloting will be open for 30 seconds. Voting is closed. Majority vote required. 88 town meeting members having voted to indefinitely postpone, 65 having voted no. The motion for indefinite postponement passes, and Article 11 is indefinitely postponed. Certainly. So the, Ms. Allison, who's been kind enough to help us out here this evening with the clerk functions of the meeting, says that we're still getting questions about people looking for their V-Voter ID. The session code, which appears in the chat box, is 331907333. Your V-Voter password was reset by an email sent to you on Friday, November 6, by Mary Ellen Lanin and the Town Clerk's Office. So please go to the mailbox at which you receive your town meeting emails. Look on the afternoon of Friday, November 6, and you should have an email that gives you the V-Voter link, the session code, and a new password. It's not the password we were using on Monday, or Thursday, rather. It's a new password that was reset on Friday, November 6. So by a procedural motion previously made and passed by the meeting, we are suspending the rules to go slightly out of order here. And this brings us to consideration of Article 13, brought by the Select Board. Article 13 appears on page 17 of the Fall Annual Town Meeting booklet dated November 5, 2020. And on page 17, under Article 13, it's moved and seconded that the Select Board be authorized to lease for a term of 99 or fewer years the land identified on the plan entitled Plan of Land Waterfield Parking Lot Winchester, Massachusetts, progress print dated November 2, 2017. And the language is as otherwise set forth on page 17 of the Fall Annual Town Meeting Motion booklet. The motion having been made and seconded, this brings us to the consideration of the motion. A presentation will be made by Mr. Bettencourt and Ms. Verdicchio of the Select Board on Article 13.
Good evening. My name is Mike Bettencourt, Chair of the Select Board.
And my name is Susan Verdicchio, Vice Chair of the Select Board.
And we'll be discussing Article 13. Article 13 asks town meeting to allow the Select Board to negotiate with a developer chosen through the RFP process, Civico. The decision to support the Civico proposal was unanimously chosen by the working group, community stakeholders, and the Select Board.
This article asks to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to lease for a term of 99 or fewer years the land identified on a plan entitled as the Waterfield Parking Lot.
This is a Select Board-led effort to redevelop the Waterfield Parking Lot for residential mixed-income development. The goal is to enhance the economic vitality of the town center and provide affordable housing opportunities, both top priorities for the town. The selection process is as follows. There's a request for qualifications process that was created in January 2020. Nine developers were pre-qualified. Then there is a request for proposal that was issued on July 1, 2020. The Select Board conducted interviews September 21st and 23rd, and the Select Board recommends moving forward with a long-term lease to Civico for redevelopment of the site.
This is a partnership between the town of Winchester and Mass Housing, Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency, and the impetus for project is based on the housing needs and strategies identified by the Housing Production Plan.
Winchester currently has one of the lowest levels of affordable housing in the state. It was 1.87% at the time of the Housing Production Plan, but increased because of the River Street project. Winchester attained safe harbor status under 40B with the 2018 Housing Production Plan and 147-unit affordable housing project on River Street. To stay in safe harbor, the town needs at least 40 affordable units built every year. Redeveloping the Waterfield Lot with a 60-unit affordable housing project advances this goal.
This multi-year project began early in 2017 as the town developed a housing production plan through community outreach and stakeholder support. After its adoption, the town partnered with Mass Housing and JM Goldson and Associates to develop and put together the RFQ with an objective of identifying the qualified developers for the project. In 2019, the town received responses from several qualified developers and invited them to bid for the project in 2020. Last month, the Select Board chose Civico and its proposal to move forward to town meeting. The town will return to town meeting in spring 2021 for final approval of all the documents, and the applicants will proceed to the financing stage and permitting of the project.
The developer qualifications for the project were a minimum five years affordable housing experience, commitment to 25% of affordable units, a successful track record, three or more projects, and the financial capacity two times pre-development budget.
For developer selection, affordable housing is at least a minimum threshold of 25% of the units restricted as affordable, and housing is for rental units. Design complements existing buildings and the historical character of town center. With respect to the MBTA station, it integrates the streetscape and new station into the design. From the prospect of sustainability, the project meets sustainability guidelines of the town. And parking, proposal needed to provide for sufficient parking for building residents and address the loss of public parking as well.
Here are some renderings of the proposed Civico project from the common. You can see the archway in the front and how the massing of the building is held toward the rear of the parcel. The archway at the entrance of the facility connects two commercial retail units and allows access to the MWRA sewer easement, which made design of the project challenging.
The Civico proposal will have 60 units, made up of 21-bedroom units, 34 two-bedroom units, and six three-bedroom units comprising 51,000, I'm sorry, square feet of space. Because the property is 100% rental with more than 25% of the units at or below area median income, the town gets credit for the 100% of the housing units built there.
While affordable housing is a priority for the site, parking was one of the challenging components of the RFP. Civico stood out immediately as the design that would provide the best parking solution with 85 total spaces and 40 public spaces. The Chamber of Commerce has recommended the Civico proposal, but asked the Select Board to conduct a full parking study of the downtown. If town meeting approves Article 13, we will begin parking study of the downtown and present it to town meeting.
As Winchester kicked off a new phase of the Climate Action Plan, we asked the developers to answer the question about sustainability, and Civico really delivered. They're proposing rooftop solar panels, cutting-edge all-electric HVAC systems, as well as a community garden plot with grape barters overlooking the common.
The next step is negotiation with the development team, land disposition at Spring Town Meeting, design, permitting, and financing in 2021. Please join us in supporting Article 13. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bettencourt and Ms. Verdicchio. This brings us to the consideration of Article 13. May we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee, Mr. Russianato?
Sure. Hi. I'm just going to share my screening for a quick slide. So hi, Enzo Russianato here from the Finance Committee. Just wanted to, overall, FinCom recommended favorable action on this article. From a quick cost-benefit comparison, from a cost perspective, we are leasing the Waterfield Lot, and it's been priced for $3.4 million. And the benefits, though, include more downtown housing, and it's good timing with the MBTA project, but most significantly is the credit toward affordable housing. So this would, as, as Mike just said, would extend our safe harbor further, depending on the time, timing of the deal. The financials of the deal haven't yet been solidified and will be finalized during the negotiation process, which is going to be the next step if we pass it via town meeting. You can see on the right there some of the pro forma assumptions submitted by the developer. $1 million payment to the town, the, the town then has to contribute $500,000 back, back to the project. So total upfront payment of $500,000, and then property taxes in the current pro forma are starting at $134,000 a year. Right? So overall, FinCom was very favorable to exploring the deal specifics further with, with the developer via that negotiation process, but the specifics of those negotiations will determine ultimately if this is a good deal for the town. So the final proposal, once, once it goes through that, that negotiation process, would come back to town meeting for final approval. So overall, we're, we're, our recommendation is favorable action.
Thank you very much, Ms. Russianato. Further on the motion, we have a recommendation from the Planning Board. On behalf of the Planning Board, its chairperson, Ms. Von Mary. Ms. Von Mary?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, town meeting. The Planning Board voted 4-0 with one absent. Hannah was absent at the time of the vote. When we wrote the CBD and we're going through the analysis When we wrote the CBD and were going through the analysis of that site, a lot of schematics were done. That led to the writing of the zoning and also the RFP that was produced. We are recommending favorable action as this is a great partnership for the town and will lead to excellent opportunities for us. Actually, all five proposals that were brought before the Select Board for their consideration were excellent, but Civico will be a great partner. Also to note, what is being proposed does meet the zoning, as it is currently written, to the best of our understanding. And I think that it really will be a strong visual that will promote the common but also promote the train station. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Von Maring. Further on the question, Article 13, 2/3 vote required. Mr. Conti, Tony Conti, on Article 13.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, I believe the parking that's designated for the unit owner or rather occupants, tenants, I should say, there's only 40 or 45 spaces for 60 units. That's got to be less than our zoning requirement, and I'm wondering, is there going to be some sort of a lease restriction limiting how many cars could be, how many cars the tenants could have? And number two, I wonder if there's, if the selectmen have considered the sale of the property or what, if there's an appraisal for the sale value as opposed to the 99-year lease. I realize a 99-year lease is probably pretty close to the value of the full fee interest, but I just wonder if we have some answers on those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Town meeting members questioned as to the parking coverage, how it relates to the normal ratios that the town has in place, and then further whether there's been any economic analysis on the value of the lease itself. The Chair notes, echoing Mr. Russianado from the Finance Committee's comments, that the ultimate values here will be subject to a further vote at Town Meeting once the lease is negotiated and a development agreement is put in place. But in response to those questions, Mr. Bettencourt?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and Mr. Conti, and maybe Brian Zekely can jump in on this one, too. It saw him pop up there. But, you know, I think what we want to underscore here is this is a concept that may change as we begin our negotiation with the developers. So the parking as it exists now was the most that we felt was provided by the developers that submitted their proposals. But in regards to the other question from Mr. Conti, we weren't interested in selling the property. It's very valuable land right in the town center adjacent to the train station, so it wasn't something that we looked at. Frankly, the developers weren't interested in that either when we initially spoke with them. So I think a lease arrangement was what we had discussed, and I know that we've been working with the Finance Committee, and we will continue to work with the Finance Committee as we negotiate this. So, and Brian, I don't know if you had any, through you, Mr. Moderator, I don't know if Brian Zekely, Town Planner, had any comments regarding the parking?
Mr. Zekely, the Town Planner on the parking ratios.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The parking ratio is actually consistent with the buy-right zoning that's currently for the Center Business District. It is 0.75 spaces per unit, so for 60 units, 45 is 0.75. So they would not need relief for the parking ratio.
Thank you, Mr. Zekely. Further on the question, Ms. Prior, Michelle Prior, on Article 13.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michelle Prior, Precinct 4. I have one question, I'm not sure to whom it should go, maybe Select Board, but what was the consideration to keep the Chamber of Commerce building intact as opposed to finding space for them in a development? It's not as if it gets a lot of sunlight now, but with that design, it looks to be certainly dwarfed by what's coming in, and I'm just wondering, what was the consideration? Was it architectural, structural, or what?
The Town Meeting members questioned to the proponents, what motivated retaining the current Chamber of Commerce building? Mr. Bettencourt, response to the question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Ms. Prior. It was really just the developer's proposal. It was something that, I don't want to say we were kind of hoping for, but it was, you know, we had anticipated that some of the proposals would include removing the Chamber of Commerce, and we are looking to find another location for them now because the building really is in disrepair, and so we will need to be doing, either investing money in it, which we probably won't do, or taking it down. So that will be part of the negotiation moving forward, but that's where we're at.
Further on the question, Ms. Mason Crowley, on Article 13.
Hi, Meredith Crowley, Precinct 1. Quick question on looking at the number of developments that are going on in the town. Has there been a study to look at overall, given all this development of the numbers of children that would be coming into the school system? I know the other night when the school committee did their presentation, they mentioned something between 200 and 300 children that they estimated would be coming in with the new develops, and I was wondering if there was a collective study on the impact of all the developments townwide. Thank you.
The question by the Town Meeting member about whether or not the school population impact has been calculated with respect to current development, Mr. Nixon from the School Committee has offered to respond to that, but why don't we ask Ms. Verdicchio on behalf of the Select Board to respond in the first instance? Ms. Verdicchio?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was going to say that the, I think the enrollment projections overall for the district are based on the facilities master plan, but they have been updated, and that the school committee has been also keeping the Mass School Building Association, Mass School Building Authority apprised of enrollment growth. So yes, I'm glad Mr. Nixon is able to talk to this question in more detail.
In further response to the Town Meeting members' question, Mr. Nixon?
Yes. Okay. So, thank you. You hear me okay? I'm sorry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nixon.
Apologize, apologize for that. So it's a great question, and it's a timely question. As Ms. Verdicchio mentioned, we are in close contact with the Massachusetts School Building Association in our partnership on the New Lynch Elementary School, and while we had some initial projections with respect to development in town, both 40B and otherwise, we've been working hard to update this, and I really want to thank, in particular, our Town Planner, Brian Zekely, who's worked so closely with me, with the Superintendent, with Ms. Whittamore, who's our Finance Director. With respect to the Waterfield Project in particular, I can share, we would anticipate between 40 and 45 new students in the Winchester Public Schools, of them 20 or 21 elementary or K-5 students. I believe the Town Meeting members questioned, though, also asked just more broadly about impact, so I'm happy to add to that and say the Cambridge Street Project, which I think we heard about on the first night of the meeting, I think from Ms. Von Maring, that's 96 units. We believe that that project would bring 25 to 30 elementary students in particular. We don't have projections for grade 6 through 12. The River Street Project near the Lynch-Morocco line, we estimate 85 to 95 Winchester students, that is grades K through 12, with between 30 to 35 elementary students. And then the last piece, of course, is the large Holton Street development, which stalled out thankfully about three years ago, but that parcel has now been purchased by Bain Capital. We estimated at that time up to 120 K-5 students, but again, that project is on hold. So lots going on. The point's a good one. Development brings new Winchester residents and frequently new students, and we welcome them all. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nixon. So one final comment on Article 13 by someone who's not a Town Meeting member, John Serbier from the Winchester Housing Partnership Board. Mr. Serbier?
Okay, I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are.
Okay. The Housing Partnership Board supports approval of Article 13. Select Board members Verdicchio and Bettencourt reference the Housing Production Plan, actually work on the reuse of this site goes back some 20 years. There have been multiple studies conducted by the Planning Board as well as the Select Board. Each of these efforts has concluded that redevelopment of this parcel for residential purposes would represent a better use of this land than having it continued as a inefficiently configured surface parking lot. The proposed design consists of a combination of mixed-income housing, open space, retention of some amount of public parking, and small retail. The proposal complements the town common, is consistent with the new zoning for the Central Business District that was proposed by the Planning Board and adopted by Town Meeting. In addition, the design, as has been reported, incorporates strong climate change and sustainability measures that are consistent with the town's recently updated Climate Action Plan. So there are multiple important objectives being accomplished with this proposal. This will be rental housing. This is an important housing need within Winchester. The units will be, as been displayed, a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, perhaps with some studio units. 2/3 of the 60 total units will serve households earning with an annual income between 30% and 120% of the Boston area median income. As a reference, the 80% of Boston median income represents approximately $85,000 per year. Well, each of the five proposals was considered to be strong. Multiple Town Boards eventually concluded that the Civico submission was the strongest and that negotiation should be undertaken with the Civico team. So in summary, the Housing Partnership Board strongly supports approval of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Serbier, further on the question, Michael Galvin. Mr. Galvin?
Thank you. I just had a question again for the school board on the current status of the capacity of the elementary schools. Are they, like, most of this would probably have Lincoln, is there a space at Lincoln? Or are they planning to move more people to Lynch? Or how's that going to work?
The Town Meeting member to the school board, the current capacity within the elementary school system and whether there is capacity at the moment. In response to that question?
I can address that.
Thank you, Mr. Venaya.
So at Lincoln, there is not any space at Lincoln, and Lincoln is also specifically, Lincoln is landlocked and space where it's located, so we cannot even expand Lincoln. I do not have the numbers right here, and I'm sure that Mr. Nixon does. I believe that there might be some space at one of the schools, but we are out of space district-wide. We will have to redistrict at some point in the future, and that will probably happen after the completion of the New Lynch. It might need to happen before then if a number of these buildings are completed in that timeframe. So hopefully, we won't have to.
Ms. Venaya, I also have you on my list to speak to the motion. Was there anything you wanted to add with respect to the motion?
I did, thank you. I wanted to point out that the school committee did not discuss or take a vote on Articles 13 or 12, although, as you've heard, we are very concerned about the increasing number of housing developments, as we discussed and as Mr. Nixon spoke of. But I also think it's fair to say that schools are better capable of finding space for students coming in slowly over time as opposed to absorbing a large number from a few gigantic developments. So as such, while not discussed or voted by the school committee, the Housing Production Plan would seem to achieve that, as would Article, the goals behind Articles 13 and 12. So I wanted to make it clear that we did not discuss these or vote on them, but we do, I think it's clear that having students come in slowly over time as opposed to 160 at once is preferable.
Thank you, Mr. Venaya. Further on the question, Mr. Nixon, Mr. Nixon on Article 13.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You hear me okay?
Yes.
So I just wanted to answer Mr. Galvin's question specifically and maybe just add a thought to Mr. Venaya's comments. So to Mr. Galvin, I believe as recently as last year, we were basically four classrooms short. We have, at the elementary level, I'm talking just specifically about the elementary level, about 100, I think it's 106 classrooms. That means space is so intended, so designed to house what we think of as a core classroom, and yet we were running 110 sections. And so how do we make that up? We take computer labs, we split libraries, we take art rooms. In the case of Lincoln, the music instruction room is a classroom once again and has been for some time. So it's always been a priority of the school committee to maintain strong class sizes, meaning relatively small class sizes, but by no means the smallest relative to some of our peers, and to do that, you need space. So to Mr. Venaya's point, we are out of space district-wide. I do believe we have currently a classroom available at Ambrose, but we're certainly pinched elsewhere, and so if we were to rebalance or redistrict today, we would still find ourselves short. And then, Mr. Moderator, if I could just add to Mr. Venaya's point about the Housing Production Plan, while the school committee has never voted it, I want to be clear, our master plan seriously and thoughtfully incorporated the prospect of the Housing Production Plan in our 2017 master plan. It had not yet been voted by the Select Board, but we knew there was really thoughtful work going on on their part as well as the Housing Partnership Board. And so our long-range 10-year planning absolutely incorporates the fruit, if you will, that the Housing Production Plan bears. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. We did have a request from a resident, not a member of the Town Meeting, to speak. The Chair, having taken a standing vote earlier in the Town Meeting at night one to allow people who are residents of the town to speak at Town Meeting, Ms. Leon, Diana Leon, L-E-O-N, Ms. Leon, under Article 13.
I was a little concerned. Well, I was more talking about the Swanton. I was kind of waiting for that to show up, where the Mexican restaurant is on Chester Street.
That's Article 12. We are not debating that at the moment, but if you want to stand by, you're more than welcome to comment on Article 12 when it comes before the meeting.
Yes, I was just waiting for that to come up. Thank you so much for the time.
No problem. And then finally, our last speaker on Article 13, Mariano Colliuboff from the Select Board. Mr. Colliuboff?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. When the Select Board embarked on the Housing Production Plan, the feedback that we got from all the residents was that we wanted to, that all the residents said we wanted to have developments and units happen, not all at the same time and not all in the same place, but distributed through different areas of town. So while the impact on the schools is well-understood, Article 13 and the Waterfield Lot is exactly what the Housing Production Plan feedback said. It's a small number of units in an appropriate place. While we might be in safe harbor right now, if we don't produce these units, we will not be in safe harbor in a couple of years, and we are again subject to a hostile 40B building 300 units somewhere and putting 150, 200 kids in the schools at the same time. That is much harder to absorb than if we are in control of the development and we are able to put 20 to 30 kids in the schools at a time. So I think that's very important to keep in mind. Article 13 does that. It lets the town keep control of how affordable housing development happens, and it is done in a location that also helps our small businesses because our town center businesses will have a lot of customers now living within walking distance of their businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Colliuboff. The vote now on Article 13, which appears on page 17 of the Fall Town Meeting Book. The motion is previously stated by the Chair and referenced in the written materials and is set forth with particularity on page 17 of the motion booklet. 2/3 vote required. Please go to your V voter screen. Balloting will be open for 30 seconds. All those in favor of 17, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. 13, I'm sorry.
Mr. Colliuboff, the vote now on Article 13, which appears on page 17 of the Fall Town Meeting Book. The motion is previously stated by the Chair and referenced in the written materials and is set forth with particularity on page 17 of the motion booklet. Two thirds vote required. Please go to your V voter screen. Balloting will be open for 30 seconds. All those in favor of 17 vote yes, those opposed vote no. 13, I'm sorry. 161 members of the Town Meeting having voted, 108 votes in the affirmative required for passage, 151 having voted yes, 10 having voted no. The motion passes and Article 13 has passed. This brings us back to Article 12. Article 12 also brought by the Select Board is on page 15 of the Fall Town Meeting booklet. Under Article 12, it's moved and seconded that the Select Board is authorized to acquire for purposes of affordable housing by purchase, donation, eminent domain, or otherwise fee easement leasehold or other real property interests in, on, over, across, under, and along all or any portion of the three parcels of land being located at 278, 292 Washington Street and 12 and 16 to 20 Swanton Street Winchester. And the language is as otherwise set forth on page 15 of the motion booklet. The motion having been made and seconded on behalf of the motion, the proponents from the Select Board, Mr. Betancourt and Ms. Verdicchio.
Good evening. My name is Mike Betancourt, Chair of the Winchester Select Board.
And I'm Susan Verdicchio, Vice Chair of the Select Board.
And we will be presenting Article 12. When we first began looking for pictures of the lot for the presentation, Beth sent some over that we didn't think we were looking for from the 1950s and beyond. But I think these pictures tell a story of how the town has evolved, how use of our buildings and structures have evolved. What was once one of the most bustling parts of Winchester has declined from market conditions and change of use and has been blighted for nearly a decade. And as the Planning Board has reminded us repeatedly, zoning is fluid. It must evolve as our needs change. And the history here tells a story and should inform us of our future plans.
For decades, the building was owned and operated by Donato and Anna Gattinari. Born in Italy in 1923 to parents John and Camilla, Donato immigrated to the United States at the young age of 12. After attending Winchester High School, Donato enlisted in the United States Army and bravely fought in Normandy on D-Day. After the war, Donato, along with his father and brother, opened fashion clothiers in Winchester, which he operated with his family for 65 years.
Donato served on the Board of Directors of the Winchester Hospital, was an active member of St. Mary's Parish, the Winchester Rotary Club, and the Sons of Italy. The town honored Donato during our Veterans Day exercises in 2016. Donato passed away a year later on November 17, 2017.
Article 12 seeks to authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase, donation, eminent domain, or otherwise for up to $3,150,000 for acquisition for the purpose of deed-restricted affordable housing.
The Select Board is requesting permission to acquire this approximately one acre lot at the corner of Washington and Swanton Streets by purchase or eminent domain for $3.15 million. The amount is based on a full commercial appraisal of the property by the firm T.H. Renssner issued last month. Having control of the property would allow the town to issue a request for proposals from qualified developers for a mixed-use deed-restricted affordable housing development. The town would then return to the Town Meeting in the spring for approval of the project and disposition of the land. The RFP procedure is legally required, transparent bidding process, which was recently followed for the Waterfield Project. It would allow the town with input from the community to set criteria such as preference for rental housing, design considerations, like project scale or environmental sustainability. Before any taking by eminent domain, the town would be willing to negotiate a purchase from the existing owner.
The very first goal identified in the town's 2020 master plan is to encourage more commercial, mixed-use, and compact development in areas that support economic vibrancy, including strategic redevelopment parcels in the town center and identified in evolving opportunity areas. The star on the map, added for clarity, identifies the parcel we're talking about right in the middle of an evolving opportunity area identified in red and surrounded by the Neighborhood Protection Area shown in purple. The two squares on the map identify Morocco School and Leonard Field to the north and Winchester High School to the south. The master plan goes on to describe the area further. A primary connection between North Main and Washington Streets, Swanton Street presents opportunities to foster redevelopment of key sites coupled with public streetscape and wayfinding improvements. The black line connecting Morocco and the high school is a tri-community bikeway. The parcel is within walking distance to the town center and public transportation as well.
The 2020 master plan further directs us to create and preserve housing that is affordable and accessible to all, especially small-scale development that harmonizes with Winchester's character and provides easy access to everyday amenities and needs.
Why do we need affordable housing? Until recently, Winchester had one of the lowest percentages of affordable housing in Massachusetts at 1.8%. With increasing home values and a surge of knockdowns, diversity of housing is becoming vital to maintaining this fabric of our community. There are limited opportunities and sites for the town to implement the Housing Production Plan and fend off large hostile 40B developments. Mixed-income developments allow for residents of all ages to stay in Winchester regardless of their income, including seniors looking to downsize.
40B is a state law established in 1969 to require towns to build affordable housing. This permits developers to circumvent local zoning and fast-track lower moderate income housing development with limited input from local authorities. Cities and towns are subject to 40B if they are under 10% affordable. Winchester is now under 3%. Housing Production Plan allows local authorities to control the development of housing. Winchester can reject 40B developments if we produced 40 units per year on our own. As long as the project provides 25% of the units at the level of affordability if rental, all the units count towards our obligation.
For purposes of 40B, the state defines affordability as 80% of area median income. That means about $95,000 per year for a family of four at 2020 numbers.
If Winchester does not have a permitted project of at least 40 units of affordable housing by 2022, a little over a year from now, Winchester will no longer be in safe harbor. Winchester has already avoided multiple large 40B applicants. The town was granted safe harbor after adopting the Housing Production Plan in 2019 and permitting the River Street 40B project. The approved River Street development in the photo will have 147 rental units when built, with 37 are affordable.
While the Mill Creek proposal was withdrawn by the developer, Bain Capital has since purchased the property and could put forward a 40B the day we fall out of safe harbor in March of 2022. That project proposed 340 units of housing.
The proposed Forest Ridge development proposed 296 units.
Currently, the property on Washington Street is Zone GBD-1, meaning the current owner can only build a commercial development there by right. There would need to be zoning relief and approval from the town to support any zoning change. The town's Housing Production Plan and Master Plan have identified the parcel as one of the few remaining well-suited locations for affordable housing because of its walkability proximity to the town center and schools as well as the bikeway.
Nearly a decade ago, the proposal to build a CVS at this site triggered a massive David and Goliath-style legal battle between the neighbors and CVS. Around town, we all saw the "no mega CVS" signs as the residential neighborhood rejected the project as out of character and inappropriate for this part of town. The neighbors funded their own legal defense, which lasted over five years in Land Court. In the summer of 2017, in shock to all parties involved, the Land Court annulled the approval, a major victory that for so long seemed impossible. The developer abandoned the project, and it sat for years, restricted by its zoning and blighted condition, and it continued to decline.
Fast forward to 2019, a new project emerged. The parcel came under the control of a new developer, Brian Melanson. Melanson worked closely with the town and the town planner to design a housing development that would meet the objectives of the town and the neighborhood. The project would include approximately 60 units with affordable housing and ground-level retail.
Melanson and his team presented the proposal for the parcel to the neighborhood at a meeting at the Sons of Italy. The well-attended meeting concluded by applause from the neighbors and a signal of support after years of litigation. This project would involve a partnership with the town for a friendly 40B.
But earlier this year, COVID-19 emerged, destabilizing the financial markets and forcing yet another sale of the property to a new owner. Since the purchase, the property remains undeveloped, unimproved, and without any tenants or residents. Multiple discussions with the owner have yielded no plans for development, and the owner has attempted to rent some storefronts individually, but there remain no tenants.
The Select Board objectives are to increase affordable housing and maintain safe harbor status, acquire the land in order to sell to a qualified developer, develop similar RFP processes, the Waterfield Lot, establish a working group to evaluate proposals, including neighbors and Town Meeting members, and the Finance Committee. The debt service is to be paid by the Affordable Housing Trust created by Town Meeting in 2019. The town's Affordable Housing Trust will retain ownership of the affordability restriction.
Over the past several months, the project has been spearheaded by Select Board and Planning Board Member Maureen Meister and Town Planner Brian Zekely, also including John Servier and Marty Jones from the Housing Partnership Board, Bond Counsel Jay Gonzalez, Special Counsel Mark Bobrowski, and Rich Bowen as well, Town Counsel Mina Macarius, and Affordable Housing and Financing Consultants Mora Sangus and Cliff Bomer.
As part of our risk analysis, we asked the questions, if we buy it, what can be built there? Will developers be interested? Working with the Housing and Finance Consultants, Mora Sangus and Cliff Bomer, we engaged three feasibility studies, one producing 30 units towards our subsidized housing inventory.
And another, which would produce 50 units towards our affordability.
And the last, producing 30 units towards our subsidized housing inventory.
So how do we pay for it? In the spring of 2019, Town Meeting approved the creation of the Affordable Housing Trust. This allows Winchester to be more nimble and specialized in pursuing affordable housing units in pursuit of our affordable housing objectives. The Town Meeting transferred in excess of $1 million from the Selectman's Housing Fund built up over many years into the trust.
One of the benefits of our AAA bond rating is that we can borrow very inexpensively. One of the tools the town employs for everything from flood mitigation to school construction is the purchase of short-term bonds or bands. The Affordable Housing Trust currently has in excess of $1 million and would be reimbursed for the first-year debt service of $39,000 and $47,000 in the likely event that it takes two years to close a purchase. Not a single dollar will come out of the town's operating budget or free cash.
This neighborhood needs our protection and our action. Our master plan is meaningless without the courage to implement it. Our efforts are only as strong as our willingness to pursue the change we want to see. This parcel presents an opportunity and a responsibility. In the words of Jane Jacobs, "We need eyes on the street." As she says, "The sidewalk must have users on it to add to the number of effective eyes on the street and to introduce people in the buildings along the street to watch the sidewalks in sufficient numbers." Nobody enjoys sitting on a stoop or looking out a window at an empty street. Almost nobody does such a thing. Large numbers of people entertain themselves off and on by watching street activity. We need to revitalize this neighborhood, and we ask you to support this article in pursuit of many long-term objectives of our town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Betancourt, Ms. Verdicchio. Further on the question, may we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee, Mr. Russianau?
Yes, Hi. Bingcom voted favorable action on Article 12, though with just a vote of eight to five. So this is a really big ask, $3.1 million, but we do understand the Select Board's rationale on this. So it makes sense to leverage the build-out to further push out the 40B safe harbor. There was some concern on the committee with the risks associated with buying and reselling real estate. Now, the big assumption here is that you can make, you know, that we can make sure that the cost to purchase the property will be comparable to what we get when we sell it. If we're forced to pay top dollar, and then we have to reduce the sale price to get an affordable housing proposal, that would obviously significantly increase the cost of the project. So that being said, there was quite a bit of research by the Select Board with the housing consultants, as you saw in the presentation, to consider this. So the risk does have some mitigants. So overall, Bingcom is supportive of Article 12.
Thank you very much, Ms. Russianau. Further on the question, may we have a recommendation from the Planning Board through its Chair, Ms. Von Mary, Ms. Von Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the Planning Board acts as an advisory entity to Town Meeting land use, and we took a vote of it this evening. It was 5-0, and we are recommending unfavorable action on this article. We recognize that there is a need for affordable housing, and this is a good location for it. And we would support the article if the words eminent domain were stricken from Article number 12. At this time, we believe that more visioning is needed for this site, and it's in a stark contrast to what Waterfield Lot went through to get us to pass Article 13 this evening. It's a little bit before the court, the cart before the horse in our perspective. Eminent domain is really meant for a last resort, and we don't feel the town is at this point. It is used infrequently, and it needs to be used with extreme great care. It is also a very sharp tool, and we want to make sure that people are investing in our community. So going forward, we recommend unfavorable action unless the words eminent domain are stricken from the article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Von Mary. The Housing Partnership Board through Mr. Servier has asked, been recognized on Article 12 as well. Mr. Servier.
The Housing Partnership Board supports passage of Article 12. The Washington and Swanton Street area has been abandoned for a long, for far too long. It is a blight on the neighborhood and not generating nearly as much real estate tax revenue as it should. This is an excellent location, as has been described, for a developer to build a modest number of mixed-income units for families, including the possibility of retail along the Washington Street frontage. Passages of this article will expedite the development of this land and importantly, give the town more influence and control over how this land gets reused. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Servier. Further on the question, Tony Conti, Mr. Conti, on Article 12.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As much as it pains me to agree with the Planning Board, I am concerned of the risks that are involved here, especially if eminent domain taking is contemplated. It seems to me that if there is real developer interest in this property, that the private owner should be able to sell the property. Granted, I understand that the existing owner hasn't taken any great steps, but he's not going to leave that property vacant forever. It's certainly not generating any income right now to the owner, and I'm sure that in relatively short order, that property, if it is as good a site as we are told, and I believe it is, it can be privately developed. It bothers me about, you know, the town doesn't have a great history of property development. You may recall the Wright Lock Farm debacle, where we thought we were going to make money on the, on, once when we acquired the Wright Lock Farm and sell it, but the, you know, the deal fell through, the economy, the market changed, and, you know, we're in a precarious market right now with the pandemic, and, you know, there are risks involved. And I'd hate to see the same thing happen on this site as happened at the Wright Lock Farm, where we ended up losing something over $2 million. As I recall, we sold Melanson approximately $2 million less than we acquired it for. And that's taking quite a risk now. And as to the concern about the necessity to meet the safe harbor requirements for the Chapter 40B threat, you know, we already have, the Selectmen have shown great initiatives in procuring development. The Waterfield property would bring 60 units most likely, and that would more than meet our 40-unit requirement. And we have other, other projects in the works. So I really don't think that we're that much under the gun, and I'm just concerned about taking the risk of acquiring this property and potentially suffering another failure as. as happened in the Wright Lock Farm. So I would agree with the Planning Board and postpone this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Conti. Further on the question, Roger Wilson. Ms. Wilson?
This is Roger Wilson, Precinct 1. And there was reference to preference for rental. And my question to the proponents is, why would the town be involved in anything that wasn't 100% rental, given the way that rental units are all qualify as affordable, under if we get 25% affordable in the development?
In response to Town Meeting members' question, Mr. Bettencourt?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Wilson. The way that we design these RFPs is to give favorability to more desirable components. So absolutely, the most desirable option for the town is 100% affordable rental units. Sorry, 100% rental. And so the more affordable units that we can get, the better. So it's, but, you know, we wanted to run a couple of studies to see, as Mr. Roschiano was saying, we, our goal here is to get control of the property and immediately transfer it over to a developer to get what the neighborhood wants there. So we're looking at all options, and we'll work with the neighborhood and the Finance Committee to find the best one. But certainly, to your point, rental is what will be built here.
Thank you, Mr. Bettencourt. Further on the question, Stephanie Zeremba. Ms. Zeremba?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Stephanie Zeremba from Precinct 2. I want to start by thanking the Select Board for all of the time and thought they've put into this and the information sessions that they held, which were very useful for myself and other Town Meeting members in our precinct to bring some of that information to our neighbors in advance of this discussion tonight. As you all know, the lot in question is effectively the center of Precinct 2, and its current and future state greatly impact myself and my neighbors. It kind of breaks my heart to have heard during the introductory remarks from the Select Board about it being a once bustling area of Winchester, because it's now an area that I actively avoid walking by with my daughter and husband because of its state. The, in talking with my neighbors and other Town Meeting members from Precinct 2, the sentiment I've heard, which is my own, is largely, though not by any means unanimously, in support of this article. Last week, a Town Meeting member raised the question of whether any develop, like, there would ever be any development in Winchester that people would support, that it's, we support it, we support affordable housing in theory, but when it comes down to it, we tend to find reasons to say no. And I think the answer is that this is a perfect example of a site where residents greatly support reasonable development, and we think it will largely augment the value to our neighborhood. Our neighbors are excited to welcome new families. They're excited for the possibilities of mixed-use commercial uses. There are a lot of questions, you know, I'm not denying there are questions about parking, about traffic, but I would encourage Town Meeting members to remember that there will be many opportunities to debate those things after tonight through the process, similar to what's been done, what we just talked about in Waterfield. Planning and zoning and development in Winchester are important. I think they're important to many of us. We have put so much time and effort into our master plan. There are a lot of great towns in this area, but the look and feel of Winchester is very special, and it's why myself and a lot of my friends who've moved here in the past five years have chosen to do so. And so my final point in support of the article is this. I think the biggest question that a lot of us have are not whether this lot needs development, because that's an undisputed yes, or whether we need more affordable housing, which I think is again an undisputed yes, but whether the town needs to take an ownership interest here and intervene. Yes, a developer could come in on their own without the town being involved, but we're, given the current owner's lack of doing anything, and I think the Select Board thinks there's willingness on the current owner's part to maybe negotiate. It's a really unique opportunity for the town to have the involvement like we've had in the Waterfield lot that we just went through to do the RFP process, get a lot of good thoughts and a lot of transparent process. And if we don't take this unique and timely opportunity, residents and neighbors and our town boards and committees may lose a degree of input and transparency that we won't get, even in a friendly 40B. We don't get the same guarantee of input that we would have if the town backs. So I asked Town Meeting to make the investment in an area of town that really needs it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Zeremba. Further on the question, Stacy Erzay?
Hi, Stacy Erzary from Precinct 5. And like Stephanie, I also support this article. I know we will have to come back and have, you know, further conversations in the spring, you know, to approve any project that does get proposed. But I think these are the right ideas at the right location. The town did do the housing production plan because we were so behind in affordable housing obligation or meeting our obligations. And we have safe harbor for now, but we have to continue to meet the obligation. And what we keep hearing in Town Meeting is that there aren't great options land-wise around town to do that. So here it sounds like, you know, based on the feasibility studies, we get residences up top with retail on a ground floor, and that sounds incredibly attractive to me. I live on the west side, really close to the Arlington border, and it wasn't that long ago that our family, to keep our dollars in Winchester, would go down to that spot to use the laundromat and eat Mexican food and shop at that little convenience store. It would be great to see some of that bustle return with the added bonus of residences. So I will be voting yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, Mr. Jarius Diopjarius?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that we amend this article by striking the word eminent domain. And if I have the opportunity, I'd like to express my opinion on why that would be preferable.
Let's just wait one second here. Do we have a second to Mr. Jarius's motion? The motion, which appears on page 15 in the motion booklet, contains the words in the second line, eminent domain or otherwise, and Mr. Jarius is moving to amend the motion to strike the words eminent domain. Is there a second? I think I missed.
Second. I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. So a motion having been made by Mr. Jarius and seconded by Mr. Conti, Mr. Jarius, on your motion to amend by striking the words eminent domain?
So first off, I completely agree with the idea of affordable housing at that location. And I believe that the experience the town has had with Waterfield, where the town to own this lot would also result in a favorable outcome. I believe that the use of eminent domain, without coming back to Town Meeting explaining what alternative routes the board took to try to acquire the property, I think is setting a bad precedent. Eminent domain is a really powerful tool, and I really would like to have limits on that by asking the board to really explain why, since the property has only recently been purchased in April at the outset of the COVID-19 crisis, how we can truly expect any real progress until sometime in the next several years. So I think it really behooves the board to show Town Meeting that they have done their due diligence in terms of reaching out to the property owner and negotiating with them, and then come back to Town Meeting and tell us what happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarius. Just for clarification on the meeting, the motion that Mr. Jarius makes, striking the words eminent domain, eminent domain is a legal proceeding by which a town or other governmental entity has the right to involuntarily take certain land if it's for the good of the public. And if that does take place, there is a thorough and well-trodden path for litigation for the property owner if they do not come to agreement with the town, for them to be justly and fairly compensated and to go to court to have that litigated if it's necessary. The motion that the Select Board had brought also included the possibility of purchase donation or other negotiation, but preserved eminent domain as a tool. I'll remind the meeting that Mr. Krieger, our General Outside Counsel, and also Mr. Bowen, who is Special Land Use Counsel, are available to us this evening. If people have more questions beyond the chair's general explanation of eminent domain. Now, on the motion to amend, Mr. Bettencourt, in response to Mr. Jarius's motion to amend?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Jarius. Firstly, I want to be clear. Eminent domain is an absolute last resort for the town. A negotiated purchase with the developer is the best option for all involved. But having that tool in our back pocket is really the only thing that brings the parties to the table. We won't get a return phone call without it. And while this is a tool that most communities use on a regular basis, we rarely do. But at the same time, we still have one of the lowest percentages of affordable housing in Massachusetts. So here we have an opportunity to do the right thing. Frankly, I think that there is a false sense of virtue in hiding behind the argument that Winchester doesn't do eminent domain. That position, to me, seems to be one of privilege. The real question is, do we support affordable housing? Do we pursue socioeconomic equality? I hope we do, because years from now, when we drive slowly by that building we built together and we see kids playing on the sidewalk, and they are leaping and dancing, and leaping and dancing, we will remember this day amidst all of the chaos when we made the right decision for the community. So I think the difficulty with the taking eminent domain out of the corner is it really handcuffs us. So the difference, as the Planning Board knows, with the Waterfield lot and this lot in particular, is that we don't have control or ownership. We had the luxury of taking 20 years with the Planning Board developing the Waterfield proposal, and because nobody else had ownership of the land. So for this parcel, it's really shameful, in this location in Precinct 2, that we can't produce anything that is productive on the town side. And it's going to be hard for our community to produce 40 units of housing. If we get the Waterfield lot permitted in time, which is very difficult to do because of the financing involved, we're going to need something to come right behind it. And without this project, we don't have anything. So we're looking at the locations that we mentioned before, the Holton Street project and potentially Forest Ridge, you know, a few hundred units at a time. So that would be my only concern. And, you know, we reluctantly will move forward with eminent domain, but it's something that's important.
Thank you, Mr. Bettencourt. On the motion to amend, Ms. Von Mary, the Chair of the Planning Board?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I was going to, actually, I think our stance is different than Mike explained, but I was actually going to add more depth to our discussion about eminent domain on the Planning Board. Our position was actually, if the words are stricken from eminent domain, we would be in support if the Select Board then go forward with Article 12 as it's written to return to Town Meeting if they strike out with an update, and then would be willing to consider eminent domain at that time. It's just right now, there is not enough evidence that there is a need to go to Town Meeting to give the Select Board the authority to use eminent domain on this site, that we would like more work done by the Select Board before that is written and given to them. But we would welcome coming back once they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Von Mary. We're now debating the motion to amend Article 12 by striking the words eminent domain. On the motion to amend, Rebecca Slills? Ms. Slows, on the motion to amend?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Rebecca Sliz, Precinct 8. Like Stephanie and Stacy who spoke before me, I support this article as written. My first thought when I read the article, including the term eminent domain, was about my experience as a summer intern for the Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative, or DSNI, a community organization based in Roxbury, where eminent domain was used not as a preferred mechanism, as a tool, and I believe that word was just used by the moderator, as a tool, to enable the neighborhood to take control of development in a situation where no one else could or would. And some of you may have heard of DSNI. They've gone on to accomplish a lot in their 25-year, 35-year history. I see the Select Board's proposed action, or the action in this article, in a similar way. Winchester appears to me to be a bit stuck on the issue of affordable housing. The existing percentage of 1.9% or potentially closer to 3% is still embarrassingly low. One challenge has been to find the right space. This land available at Washington and Swanton has a lot of potential, as shown in that video earlier and echoed in Stephanie's comments about the potential of the neighborhood. Authorizing the Select Board to purchase the land, or if absolutely needed, use eminent domain, helps move along a process that I believe could be an all-around win for the owner, the town, current residents, and future residents of affordable housing units in Winchester. I encourage voting in favor of Article 12. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sliz. The Chair will remind the speakers that we're debating the motion to amend. To the extent that debate on the main motion crosses over a little bit, the Chair will try to be liberal in his view of that. There are 15 or so speakers waiting to speak on the motion to amend, and the Chair would remind the Town Meeting members that his ability to use his selective eyesight to ignore your upraised hands has been eliminated by the technology in front of us. So further on the motion to amend, Mr. Gay, Russell Gay? Mr. Gay, on the motion to amend?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I wanted to make a few observations with agreeing for the current articles written. I think Chairman Bettencourt is saying eminent domain as a last resort. And also, it sort of paints a picture for the developer that the seriousness of the town of Winchester, that they really would like to use this land to meet their 40B responsibility. I think that the Waterfield lot is a sweet spot for 40B. When it comes to transit, it's a super sweet spot. And this neighbor that could be developed up the street on the corner of Swan and Washington is a great opportunity for 40B. And it's also foot-friendly to downtown. So if the architecture is in scale with the neighborhood, sound, it creates the opportunity for busyness in the town center of Winchester, and also people who might live there to walk to the transit to commute elsewhere. I just wanted to make those observations, that I think that also if, right now, Winchester being in safe harbor, as Chairman Bettencourt said, that if this opportunity is missed, then Winchester exposes itself to being force-fed 40B, which could be in the tune of hundreds of units, where now they have an opportunity to create a sound, in-scale 40B being at the intersection of Washington and Swanton Street.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gay. Bless you, Mr. Simpson. I commend the mute button to your attention. Cynthia Kelly on the motion to amend. Ms. Kelly? Ms. Kelly, we don't see your name on our, if you're using a different email name or moniker, if you could provide that in the chat so we can get you elevated? Why don't we come back to Ms. Kelly once we figure that out? And Ms. Westner?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm not in favor of amending. I think it's just another way to stall the chance for the Select Board to get this negotiation underway. It's a tool. The word says eminent domain or, and all the other possible ways to acquire the property. I would also like to point out that although Mr. Conti has said we don't want to repeat what happened with Wright Lock Farm when the town was trying to sell it and ended up not having a developer come in, that, yes, we may have and ended up not having a developer come in, that yes, we may have spent some money on that, but Wrightlock Farm is one of the best things that happened to the community of Winchester for everybody. It's a place for everybody. And I thoroughly support this agenda item, because we also need more of everybody to be part of our town. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Westner. Further on the question on the motion to amend Article 12 by striking the words eminent domain, Ms. Kelly. Ms. Kelly, we still cannot locate you. So if you could use the chat or the Q and A function to provide us with whatever email address or identity you're using, that would be helpful. Further on the question on the motion to amend Article 12 by striking the words eminent domain, Mr. Rowan, Richard Rowan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My question is, can someone go through the history of the use of eminent domain in Winchester? It strikes me that it's been an infrequently used tool, and we'd like to know what the history has been.
The town meeting member asks whether or not the town has any experience or history with the use of eminent domain and what that history has been in response to town meeting members' question. Mr. Betancourt from the select board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Rowan, for the question. I can't say for certain. It's certainly been used very infrequently. And as I mentioned before, I mean, I think that is in direct proportion to our affordable housing deficit. I mean, we've seen multiple homes around town and properties that have been sitting there for a decade at a time like this one, the Margaret Mahoney property right across from Stop &amp; Shop there. Nothing's still built there. I mean, it's been, it's been empty since I moved to town. I can look out my window from where I am now and see another one. So when you have an affordable housing deficit, it's time to really take action and use the tools that make that work. So I know it's a tough thing for Winchester. Most communities use it. But as I mentioned, this is an absolute last resort. But without it, it makes it difficult for us to move forward with any sort of negotiation. I think there's a very high likelihood that with the eminent domain tool, we will negotiate a sale with the developer and return to spring town meeting, which is part of this process for us, is to work with the neighborhood to find what works, and then all move forward together and come back in the spring.
Thank you very much, Mr. Betancourt. Mr. Pruitt makes a motion to close debate on the motion to amend to, as we speak to it in our meeting, move the question. That motion requires a second. Is there a second on the motion to move the question on the motion to amend? Second, chair recognizes second by Ms. Allison, close by and handy as always. And accordingly, we'll proceed to a motion brought by Mr. Pruitt, seconded by Ms. Allison, to move the question on the motion to amend. So before us is a motion to strike the words eminent domain from Article 12. Town meeting member has now asked that we end our debate on the motion to amend. An affirmative vote will end debate, will then proceed immediately to a vote on the motion to amend, and then return to debate on the main motion as amended or unamended, depending on the outcome. But there'll be no further discussion or debate on the motion to amend, and no vote will allow us to continue debate on the motion to amend. If you want to cut off debate on the motion to amend and then proceed to an immediate vote, vote yes. If you want to continue debate on the motion to amend, vote no. This is a two-thirds vote to move the question and end debate on the motion to amend. The voter will be open for 30 seconds. Please go to your screen, yes to end debate, no to allow debate to continue just on the motion to amend. 163 members of the town meeting having voted on the motion to move the question and terminate debate, 109 required for passage, 138 having voted in the affirmative, 25 in the negative. The motion to close debate or move the question has passed, and accordingly, will now proceed to a vote on the motion to amend. The motion to amend is a majority vote. The motion to amend is brought by Mr. Gerius, seconded by Mr. Conti, is to strike the words eminent domain from the motion under Article 12, as it appears on page 15 of the Fall Town Motion booklet. All those in favor of the motion to amend by striking the words eminent domain, vote yes. All those opposed by allowing the motion to stand as originally presented by the selectmen, vote no. Please go to your V voter screen, where balloting will be open for 30 seconds. On the motion to amend, 46 having voted in the affirmative, 121 in the negative, majority vote required, the motion to amend fails. This returns us to debate on the main motion under Article 12, as originally presented by the select board and is set forth on page 15 of the motion booklet. On the main motion, further on the question, Carol Savage, Ms. Savage.
I no longer wish to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Savage. Just for benefit of the town meeting members, if you were in the queue to speak and no longer wish to speak, you can press the speak button and cancel your request. So on the main motion, Mr. Hart, Bennett Hart, on Article 12, the main motion. Mr. Hart.
Hello. I'd just like to speak in favor of the article. I think it's overall an excellent idea for about, I'd say, maybe at least four reasons. It's derelict now. It could be developed into a much less appealing project than is currently what the select board have in mind. This will be a useful development, both from a housing standpoint and plus of the retail. It will aliven the area, and it is important, as it's been stressed already, for being a continuation of our 40B safe harbor state. So for all those reasons, I strongly favor the article.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hart. Further on the question, Mr. Galvin, Michael Galvin. Mr. Galvin, you're on mute now. If you could unmute yourself.
Can you hear me? Yes, I have a couple of questions in regard to the different, we're in safe harbor to kind of slow development, and it does seem like we're approving a lot of safe harbor projects, like River Street, this one, and Waterfield Lot. And I'm just wondering, what's the timing on them, and how are we going to adjust so our schools can handle it and other aspects in town?
Town meeting member asking about the timing on these various projects and what adjustments the select board might make. Mr. Betancourt, in response to town meeting members' question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Galvin. So it's really hard to line up these projects when you're going year to year, because there's a financing component as well. So for the Civicol project at Waterfield, there's a long lead time for us to negotiate. They've got to then go out in probably December, January next year to find financing, and then move forward with the permitting. We only get credit for affordable units when it's permitted. So a project like this is actually more likely to allow us to continue into the safe harbor than even the one at the Waterfield Lot. So there's a lot of risk. We had the benefit of a fairly large project at River Street, 146 units. But it's, what we're trying to do here, pace these projects year to time, is very difficult. And this is one of the few options that was identified in the master plan and the housing production plan. And after that, as I said, we're going to have to work really hard to piece together some locations to keep it moving.
Thank you, Mr. Betancourt. Further on the question, Edward Levesque, Mr. Levesque. Mr. Levesque, on Article 12.
Can you hear me now, Mr. Moderator?
I can, yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. I am also a precinct two member, and for years, I've been walking my son and daughter by that blighted building. It's very troubling the way it is. I liked a lot of the things I've been hearing with the proposals. The thing that gets me, and the thing I think would make it harder for my children to dance in the street, would be that eminent domain thing. I know we've moved on, but that is, that's my one hangup now. I would, and then I, and I, you know, I echo exactly what Ms. Von Mering and Mr. Gerius said. For all the reasons they brought up, I agree. And of course, it sounds like the planning board agrees too, and they've been pretty supportive of everything else that's come by. And to have FinCom split like that also makes me wonder. However, that all said, besides the fact that I do not support it the way it is written, I also have a question for the attorney, and that is, and for Mr. Krieger, I would ask, if this gentleman, who has obviously just purchased this property, and is suffering like a lot of businesses under COVID-19, which is something I don't think is mentioned here, that a lot of businesses have come to a halt. And I think we have to take that into account when we are considering what this gentleman may or may not do. I wanted to know, suppose he doesn't go along with it. Suppose he says, hey, you know, if you just wait till the spring when things recover, I'd be okay. And he decides to fight this. It was mentioned that there might be some kind of legal proceedings. Would there be some kind of detrimental cost to the town in that? And how long could those proceedings affect us moving forward with this land, as opposed to maybe if we waited until the end of COVID, which hopefully next spring, or even next fall? How long do those proceedings take? And what might they look like financially and resource-wise for this town? And again, I otherwise state that I am opposed to the article as is, and I am also a resident, having talked to several neighbors as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levesque. The question to town council is, in the event the select board does elect to use the eminent domain tool as permitted by this motion, should it pass, what are the procedural implications and the cost implications? Mr. Krieger, I don't know if you want to respond, or Mr. Bowen, Land Use Counsel, but if one of you could respond, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Art Krieger. The town meeting member asked for my opinion. Part of his question is not a legal one. It was strategic, one of waiting versus not waiting. But as to the costs and duration of an eminent domain case, if it were brought, I am going to kick it over to Mr. Bowen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Krieger. Richard Bowen, Mr. Bowen, Special Land Use Counsel to the town on the procedural implications and cost implications of an eminent domain challenge, should the select board exercise that and the landowner contest it?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the previous speaker. Sorry, you've asked a very sophisticated and interesting question. If you'll allow me just a moment to unpack my baggage and lay out an answer for you, I will do so now. First of all, I can tell you and the meeting members that I have had discussions, preliminary discussions, with the landowners' council. And it would be my intention, if this article were to pass, to meet with him in the next 30 to 60 days to see what could be worked out. He's a very good counsel, someone with whom I have done business in the past and presumably will do business with in the future. Now, with that information in front of you, what if those discussions were unsuccessful? The next step for the town would be for the Board of Selectmen to vote, to vote upon what's known as an order of taking. And once that order of taking, which is a legal document, is recorded at the Registry of Deeds, at that point, the town owns the property. So purely from a development point of view, once the order of taking is recorded at the Registry of Deeds, the town owns it. The town may move forward with whatever developer that it chooses to move with. So there would not be a delay from that point of view. The next part of your question involves litigation timeframes. There is a statute of limitations that attaches to an order of taking. The then-former property owner has three years from the date that the order of taking is recorded at the Registry of Deeds, within which to bring suit in Superior Court. The courts have been slowed up a bit with COVID, as I'm sure you can appreciate. It would probably take a further two to three years for a case to go from filing date to a trial. So conceivably, in a worst-case scenario, it could take three years for the property owner to file a suit. It could take another two or three years for the matter to come up for trial. It could go certainly much quicker than that. And based on my discussions with council, my guess is that an action, were we unable to reach an agreement on a friendly purchase, the schedule would probably be expedited. But I think the important thing to keep in mind, and this was sort of implicit in your question, when could the town make use of the property, even if there was a lawsuit? And the answer to that question is, the second that order of taking is recorded, which could be right away, it could be quite a while from now, that's when the town owns the property. Thank you.
Very much, Mr. Bowen. Further on the question, Michelle Pryor, Ms. Pryor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not sure I'm going to vote on this one. I don't disagree that we need affordable housing. I think what's critical to me, and I was part of the select board's public hearing on this article that we zoomed in for a couple of weeks ago, none of the renderings had retail or mixed use in them. It's currently a commercial property. The history that Ms. Verdicchio went through is it was a retail site. I understand a lot of retail has shifted to Main Street and the Rotary. But it's a currently, currently zoned as commercial property. If we're going to have residents, it might be nice for them to have coffee or somewhere else to go. And I look at the development over by Oak Grove on the Melrose-Malden Line, which is rental, and some retail and restaurant. To me, what's critical is that this future property have a commercial element. We don't have enough commercial sites in our town. And I understand we would give permission and have faith that that's what would come through. But if we're suggesting that the next phase is a presentation like we had at Waterfield, what we had at Waterfield was a motion for town meeting to approve a singular design. And that concerns me. So I don't know that I have a question, other than I have a comment, that mixed use and residential and commercial use seems like appropriate for the site's history, for the town's need, for what might be a more vibrant community. I guess that's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Pryor. Further on the question, Mr. Miller, John Miller, on Article 12.
Just a quick question for one of the lawyers, counsel advising. Though there's a very famous case, I know you know it, Kelo versus City of New London, where the property owner argued that the taking was not for a public purpose. I'm sure there's an answer, but could you reassure that there is an answer to that, that such a lame word to be made?
Mr. Miller, also a lawyer, quizzing Mr. Bowen on Supreme Court precedent, precedent, Mr. Bowen, in response.
Moderator, this is turning out to be a fun night for me. Through you to the previous speaker, two things. Number one, the Kelo precedent is a little bit different than the state of Massachusetts law. We've looked at the question of whether this would be a legitimate public purpose under Massachusetts law, and it's my opinion that it is, because the predominant purpose here, unlike in Kelo, which was to promote economic development, the predominant purpose here is to promote affordable housing, and that is a legitimate public purpose. Furthermore, the town, through its Affordable Housing Trust, which presumably would involve, be involved, would, even though an outside private developer would be becoming involved, would be the holder of affordable housing restrictions, which would continue to maintain the town's public purpose and public interest in the property. I might also add, and I believe Mr. Gonzalez, eminent bond counsel, was on the line. He and I also discussed the issue of public purpose as it pertains to the taxability of potential municipal bond issues to finance a taking in a project. And Mr. Gonzalez- municipal bond issues to finance a taking in a project. And Mr. Gonzalez, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was your determination and one that I certainly agree with, that for purposes of taxability, this would be considered a public purpose such that the ultimate bondholders would enjoy a tax benefit from buying our bonds.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Getting paid by the hour and having fun. It's a good night for a lawyer. Mr. Bettencourt, I think in response to the question earlier, town meeting member speaker about the mix of commercial and residential property, Mr. Bettencourt.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In response to Ms. Pryor, absolutely, the select board intends to come back to town meeting in the spring when we get control of the property with a mixed use project. And I, and I think that's what was a little frustrating when the Melanson project that we'd worked on for so long, lost its financing, because that was a large component that we negotiated for a long time with that developer, who actually was, was very willing to work with us. So that will definitely be a component of the project we move forward. And town meeting will have a decision to make on that in the spring. So, and as a lawyer, I can't help to weigh in on Kelo versus New London as well, even though I came in under false precedent, president or Ms. Pryor's question. You know, that, that's a very different case where the city came into a neighborhood and just said, we're going to take a bunch of houses where people already lived. And we just want to do something better with them. We don't need it, we just want it. And surprisingly, the court said that was okay. And so the planning board knows as well, Jane Jacobs did submit an amicus brief on that, working with George Washington University Law School. And the point that she made very clearly was that these kinds of eminent domain takings are the kind that she does not like because they disproportionately affect people of lower income. That is the opposite of what we're doing here. We are creating affordable housing. This is something that my understanding of per line of thinking would certainly support this. Mixed use, creating an opportunity for a neighborhood where there, there would be mixed housing and income levels as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bettencourt. Kelo, Jane Jacobs, you may be bored, but it's a very elevated conversation. Richard Muti, Mr. Muti on Article 12.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Rich Muti. I'm precinct six member. I'd like to voice my support in, for the article in the select board's action. I, like most of you, I was skeptical at first when I heard about this. I've done my homework over the last couple of weeks and listened to the select board. And I think they are taking the right approach with this article and this process. This has been a, a piece of property that I've been familiar with through my, through my law practice in town for the battle that's gone on for the last decade. And it is good to see the town jumping in and trying to take control of the situation because I don't think the parties themselves will. And as, as distinctly pointed out by select board member Bettencourt, this is a, a project in a, where we are simply trying to negotiate at this point, a deal. And town meeting will be further heard on the matter. But given the climate that we have right now and, and how it could affect the town, it makes sense to put several projects in the queue and see where they go. We could be seeing a very different landscape in the spring when we come back at town meeting. And I think the select board is taking the absolutely right approach by taking control of the situation for the neighborhood, for the good of the town, and trying to get a project worked out, whether it's via eminent domain or a private sale. We as town meeting members should not fear the toolbox used by the, by the select board in this process and simply applaud them and support them in trying to take, take control of a piece of parcel that is vital to this community that has laid vacant for 10 years. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Muti. There's been a motion to close debate, move the question on Article 12. So this is a repeat request, so that what we just entertained on the motion to amend, it's brought by Robert McIntosh. Mr. McIntosh moves to close debate and move the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second on the motion to move the question?
This is Joyce Westner, I'll second.
Ms. Westner seconds the motion to move the question and terminate debate. So this requires a two thirds vote, a yes vote will end all debate on Article 12, and we'll move immediately then to a vote on Article 12. A no vote will allow us to continue debate on Article 12, and we will continue debate until that has been exhausted. So Mr. McIntosh's motion to move the question, seconded by Ms. Westner. All those in favor of terminating debate, vote yes. Those who want to continue debate, vote no. V voter will be open for 30 seconds. 162 members of the town meeting having voted, 108 required for passage, 138 having voted in the affirmative, the motion to close debate and move the question passes and accordingly will now proceed directly to a motion on Article 12. This is the motion on Article 12, page 15 of the Fall Motion Town booklet, brought by the select board, requires two thirds vote as previously read and presented to the meeting by the chair. All those in favor of Article 12, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. Please go to your V voter screen where balloting will be open for 30 seconds. 165 members of the town meeting having voted, 110 required for passage, 130 having voted in the affirmative, 35 in the negative. Article 12 passes. Thank you very much to the select board and the other boards, Planning Board and Finance Committee who participated, and especially our thanks and gratitude to our outside advisors and council as well. This brings us to Article 14. Article 14 appears on page 18 of the Fall Town Meeting Motion booklet under Article 14, brought by the select board. It's moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $240,000 from fee, from free cash for purposes of contributing the town share of improvements to the Winchester train station improvement project. And the chair is just going to check to make sure there was not an amendment to that amount.
No. Do you want the PowerPoint first or the video first?
And brought by the select board, majority vote required. Ms. Verdickio, the PowerPoint first or the video first?
I thought they were the same thing. There was a, there was a presentation, I thought.
Yes, I, some confusion by Mr. Griffin, but we'll, we did such a nice job on your last presentation, Ms. Verdickio. We'll see if we can improve our efforts this time around. The chair's apologies for that, by the way. Mr. Griffin, on you.
Good evening, town meeting members. We'd like to review the background of this article that seeks an appropriation for the town center train station. Design and cost estimation for a much needed renovation of the MBTA station in the town center has been ongoing for a number of years. The MBTA held a public hearing in March on the 100% design, which will cost an estimated $50 million to build. Besides the renovation of the exterior elements, the station needs to be made ADA compliant. The passenger platforms need to be raised so passengers can enter train cars at the same level. The ramp needs to be rebuilt at a proper grade, and elevators are required. The MBTA will also be extending the platform to allow for longer training. This is a view of the east side of the station, showing the Town Common to the left with the ramp and Laraway Road, and the Waterfield Lot is shown on the right. During the design process, the MBTA's design team met with town management, including the town manager, town engineer, DPW director, et cetera. And these meetings also included a working group of community members drawn from the Chamber of Commerce, the Planning Board, Design Review Committee, and other boards and committees. The MBTA's final design does include features and finishes sought by the town of Winchester to help the renovated station fit into the existing visual context of the historic town center. For example, some of the large stones used in the station's characteristic viaduct will be saved to reuse along the rebuilt Laraway ramp, which is highly visible from the Town Common. This is a rendering showing the Quill Rotary, where an additional pier will be needed to support the longer platform. One of the cost sharing items involves this new structural element, which will be visible from the Rotary and to pedestrians in the town center. And here's a breakdown of the cost sharing items that the MBTA is willing to do, but only with a financial contribution from the town. Altogether, these items total $240,000. Instead of a cement finish using granite on the new Quill Rotary Pier and on the bridge abutment near the Waterfield Lot, this is to match the existing granite, installing the salvaged stone veneer along the Laraway ramp, new paint on the pedestrian tunnel between the Waterfield Lot and the Aborigado Parking Lot, and an irrigation system for new landscape plantings along the viaduct on the Laraway roadside. The board proposes using free cash as a funding source for this one-time payment, which is a critical investment in the town center train station that will serve the town for the next 30 to 50 years. We ask for your support of this article. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Verdickio. Susan, is that the extent of your presentation? I was confused by someone's reference to a PowerPoint.
That's, that's it.
Thank you very much. May we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee, Mr. Russian?
Yeah, FinCom voted favorable action on this after getting a little bit more information about the specifics of the cost and the estimates from Beth, Beth, off in the town engineering department. $240,000 is, is a large expenditure, but it's in addition to a $50 million project that's going to be very visible, a very visible part of, of the town center. And it's something that's going to be there for a long time. The existing station was built in 1950. So we thought it was an appropriate expenditure. So we voted favorable action.
Thank you very much, Ms. Russian. I don't know, may we have a recommendation from the Planning Board through its chairperson, Ms. Von Mering? Ms. Von Mering?
Thank you, town meeting moderator. The Planning Board recommended favorable action 5-0. As we typically don't make motions or recommendations to town on financial items, this one is of particular interest to the Planning Board due to the amount of the relevance to the Center Business District and the amount of work and our longtime involvement on this project. The financial component of it, the 240,000, we find to be really appropriate and actually extremely good value for the town in terms of the amount that we are getting for it, which has already been repeated, but salvaging the historical stone that's on the front facade of the historical train station, providing the granite near the Waterfield Lot and the piers at the Rotary, fixing the pedestrian tunnel, which needs some major painting, and then also making sure we have irrigation for our trees so they survive. So all those things we find are really important and we support, recommend favorable action.
Thank you very much, Ms. Von Mering. Stephanie Zeremba, Ms. Zeremba with a point of order. What is your point of order, Ms. Zeremba?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Not specific to this article, but just going forward, if we are moving to terminate debate, would it be possible for the moderator to indicate to town meeting how many people are in queue to speak, not being in person? We don't have knowledge of how many of our neighbors we are moving to cut off, as much as we all, I'm sure, want to go to bed.
Yeah, the chair appreciates the point of order and will adopt that as a procedure in our remote environment, that if there is a motion to terminate debate, the chair will indicate how many people are in the queue to speak. The attraction of the button may be drawing more of those motions than we usually see. We go through points in the meeting where there's a lot of motions to terminate debate and other points where there aren't any. And sometimes we overreact. So the chair is trying to be mindful of entertaining those motions when there has been at least some reasonable period of debate and the chair believes that there may be some support for it. But I think that the point that the number of people waiting to speak be stated by the chair before those votes is an excellent one, and the chair will adopt that. This brings us to Article 14, brought by the select board, majority vote required. The motion is previously stated by the chair. All those in favor, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. Please go to your V voter screen where voting will be open for 30 seconds. 153 members having voted in the affirmative, five in the negative. Article 14 passes. This brings us to Article 15 on page 19 of the Fall Town Meeting Motion booklet. Under Article 15, it's moved and seconded. The town approved Article 15 as printed in the warrant. Under Article 15, the town seeks to act pursuant to Massachusetts Chapter 33, Section 59, to allow it to pay its public employees while, while they are fulfilling their military service obligations through drills and training to the same extent as state employees are entitled to such payment. On behalf of the proponents, the select board, Ms. Welch.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that's great. I think we do have a couple of very quick slides. If Mr. Griffin could be kind enough to...
It is a presentation. Mr. Griffin will cue up.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, town meeting and town moderator. It is an honor to be here. Thank you to all of the boards, including the select board of which I'm a member, town council, all the other important boards, and of course, town meeting members who are so vital to this process. This is, will only take a few moments, but it's obviously important. The first slide, the slide is just to kind of indicate that the whole point of Warren Article 15 is to accept the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 33, Section 59. I actually have that law in front of me. I won't read it to you, but it's a subsection E that specifically states that a county, city, or town by vote can accept this state law, which allows for any employees who are serving in the military, specifically drills and training, can maintain their public salary as well as benefits while they're in service on behalf of our country. So the effect of military service on the salary and seniority and leave allowances of public employees is the focus and is stated here and what is stated on the slide, I won't repeat it, but it indicates specifically the point of the state law, which is to allow such employees, providing this important and vital military service for our country, to not be shorted essentially with respect to their municipal compensation. I don't want to rush the slide, but I know we still have a lot to do. I'm sure you guys have already read the description of the booklet, so we can go to the second and last slide. This article shows support for those who have served and continue to serve. And as I indicate, this, as I understand it, the state law was recently amended and, and it allows for towns such as ours to actually become part of it and to allow for the extension of its benefits for these town employees. So that's why we're bringing this to your attention, so that the town can take advantage of this opportunity, so that those who serve the town and also serve in the military can have the benefit of the state statute. The second point here is members of Reserves and National Guard currently are not allowed any paid time for drills or annual training. This Warren article would fix This Warren Article would fix that in alignment with the state statute. And in, in the current year, 2020, there's only one employee who qualifies, and this does not apply if the employee receives a higher wage through the military. And finally, the new provision by Governor Baker in 2018 changed from 34 days to 40 days in any fiscal year. I know there's a team behind me who is very knowledgeable about the importance of this Warren Article. So whether I or anyone on the team can answer any questions, we're happy to do so. Otherwise, we're hoping that Town Meeting will support Warren Article 15. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Welch. May we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee, Mr. Roshan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We voted favorable action unanimously on this motion. Thank you.
The matter comes before the Town Meeting on Article 15. It was previously presented by the Chair, brought by the Select Board, majority vote required. Please go to your V voter screen. All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Ballot will be open for 30 seconds. 155 members of the Town Meeting having voted in the affirmative, one in the negative, the motion passes. This brings us to Article 16. 155 to 1. This brings us to Article 16. 16 originally included in the consent agenda, but taken off the consent agenda at the request of five Town Meeting members. Article 16, under Article 16, page 20 of the Fall Motion Booklet, it's moved in second. The town appropriated the sum of $55,000 from free cash for traffic mitigation studies. And the motion is as otherwise set forth on page 20 of the Fall Town Meeting booklet. On behalf of the proponents, the Select Board, Mr. Betancourt. Mr. Betancourt.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article is to, as you said, appropriate money for transportation facilities, operations, and services. The, we've been working for the past few years of engaging with a new committee, the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee of Residents, and working with our staff, Traffic Review Committee, to really invest time and resources in solving some of our, our traffic and transportation issues. We have many, it's shocking how much some of these projects cost. But one of the ways that we save money in the long term is trying to be a little bit more nimble and doing a study here or there, seeing if maybe a road can be made more safe if we paint lines or we do a small ramp. When we created T-TAC a few years ago, we asked Town Meeting for this free cash transfer and have used it on the Highland Avenue study, as well as the Cross Street study, two very high priority projects. We have had a lot of pedestrian accidents, accidents in the town center. We've had a fatality there. These are problems that we can't tackle all at once. But if we're a little bit more nimble and we have the ability to trigger a study or to look at an area of town, we can get ahead of it. And then we can move it into the capital project if it gets bigger than that. But it's, you know, the citizen concerns regarding transportation and safety have been the number one issue for residents when we did the master plan and when we did a townwide survey. So we need the flexibility to, to really move forward with this. And, you know, it, it really facilitates our, our capital planning cycle. Because in that cycle, we, we don't have the ability to do traffic and transportation projects that aren't queued up and aren't funded from Town Meeting. So if something comes up in the middle of the year, this is where we go. There's no other place for us to, to go for funds.
Thank you very much, Mr. Betancourt. Further in the question, may we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee, Mr. Roshan?
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Binkum actually voted unfavorable action on this motion. We had concern that the motion really doesn't have a specific ask or a particular purpose. There are a lot of expense items in the Fall Town Meeting list, including an existing traffic mitigation engineering project for Highland Avenue in Capital Article 18. We haven't made it to some of those later articles, but if you look at Articles 18 and 25, there are a significant number of projects and a lot of extra COVID expenses this year. And obviously, it's a, it's a very challenging economic environment. So given this, Binkum felt that we really should only fund essential projects that have clearly defined goals. So we did discuss an alternative. So, you know, we do appreciate what Mr. Betancourt said about being able to act nimbly and, and respond quickly. So we did discuss an alternative approach to leverage the reserve fund transfer when specific projects are identified. But, you know, our opinion was this would be preferable to having or creating another separate pool of unallocated funds, given, given the tough economic environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roshan. I know further in the question, Ms. Filio, I have some indication that you're seeking to speak, but I wasn't sure whether it was on this Article 16, Helen Filio. Helen, if you're there and do wish to speak, please let us know.
I had a question on the previous article, but it's too late. It got voted.
Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you much.
My question was, how often does this happen? And how much is involved dollar-wise? You know, the veterans thing.
Right. I, I believe it's de minimis on both, but we've moved on from that, as you aptly noted. So we will, Ms. Welch will reach out to you directly with a note, just to provide that background. And speaking of Ms. Welch, further on Article 16, Ms. Welch.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a few other points in support of Chairman Betancourt's concise comments regarding Article 16. I just wanted to, and with all due respect to the Finance Committee, and the points that were just made by the Chair were very cogent and obviously careful and wise. Nevertheless, I did want to make a quick comment in support of Article 16. As Chair Betancourt was kind of illustrating, the aspects about traffic mitigation really directly affect so many in Winchester. And often on our agenda, if anyone looks at the agenda, we very often have different topics that relate to traffic mitigation and safety discussion with our T-TAC Committee. And often we have, in pre-COVID days, roomful of, of good citizens who are very concerned about the safety of their children and their families because of the increase, what seems to be increased traffic. As we know, just from our experiences in Winchester, not to mention just this Town Meeting and its discussion of so much new development that's either in process or will be shortly, traffic mitigation and our traffic concerns have really become a vital part of what all of us consider the quality of life in Winchester. And for those who may not have thought about it in those terms, given the amount of time that the Select Board spends on this topic, the passion with which so many residents strongly and deeply feel about these issues because they meaningfully impact their lives, it's, it's certainly clear today and, and absolutely will be in the future. This is not abating. If anything, it's, it's increased over the last several years, and it, and it certainly will continue to do so as it seems that our population continues to increase. So it's important, from my perspective, I feel that there's so many aspects to the quality of life of a typical Winchester resident, and increasingly, traffic safety is a very vital, vital part of that quality of life. So with all due respect to the Finance Chair, traffic mitigation studies allows the Select Board and all those who are involved in Town Hall and other boards and committees to think thoughtfully and mindfully about the future with respect to traffic mitigation and safety studies. It's extremely important to the town and the idea so that we're not just, as Chair Betancourt was indicating, sort of reacting to something, but actually trying to have some, some degree of thought and planning. So I'll end there, but I urge you to support Article 19, Article 16. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Further in the question, Ms. Marshant.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was wondering if, Mr. Betancourt, can you tell us if there's a mechanism in place to ensure that all parts of town are receiving the same attention? Where I live, we don't tend to see as much work on our streets and sidewalk. And I was wondering what we can do to, to make sure everyone is receiving the same kind of attention. Thank you.
Mr. Betancourt, in response to Town Meeting members' question.
Thank you, Ms. Marshant. That, you can blame that on Jay Gill. That's his fault if you're over there. But it was really one of the reasons that we created the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee of Residents from all precincts, so we could be informed of what the priorities are for. A lot of times it can be a crosswalk. We can be moving fog lines. And I, and I say we, it was really Selectman Emeritus Lance Grenzaback that really put this whole thing together. And because we didn't have enough resources to manage all these programs. So Enzo had mentioned the two projects, Cambridge, the Highland Avenue and Cross Street. And those actually came out of these funds that they had initially been funded with. So that's where these projects start. And that's, you know, why we need them to move forward, because the longer these projects take, costs us more money. So every year they go up approximately 15%, and we've seen some of them double. So to your question, the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee, I think Roger Wilson is here somewhere, one of the chairs with Ben Keeler. If we have, if you go to our website, you can actually submit an application for a, a traffic issue there, and it will be addressed by the, both the Traffic Review Committee and the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Betancourt. Further in the question, Ms. Winkleman on Article 16. Ms. Winkleman.
Hi, Sherri Winkleman, Precinct 8. My question, I'm not sure who this goes to, but how much does $55,000 get you in traffic studies? Is that one traffic study? Is that three traffic studies? And if it's only a couple of traffic studies, is this really a, a good way of getting at what was a very important issue on the Master Plan Steering Committee's input from the public? Thank you.
Town Meeting members' question about how much traffic studies we're able to buy for this proposed allocation of $55,000. In response, Mr. Betancourt.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If the Town Engineer, Ms. Rudolph is available, or any alternative, Mr. Zakelli, Beth is our kind of reluctant traffic engineer. So if she's here, she can weigh in a little bit more accurately than I can.
Beth Rudolph, the Town Engineer. Yes, please, Ms. Rudolph. Yep.
Thank you. So you're right, $55,000 doesn't get us a whole lot in terms of traffic studies. I think the goal with this money is to try to do some of the smaller scale projects that come up over the course of the year or to be able to augment some other of the larger projects that we see come through. And as Selectman Betancourt mentioned, the goal is, you know, maybe we'll start a, start a study through this process that then leads to a larger capital project and capital request down the road. So it's certainly not going to design and fund any large scale projects, such as the work we just did at the McCall School, but it'll help us hopefully address some of the smaller scale projects and concerns that we could see coming through from the neighbors or the schools throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rudolph. Further in the question, Richard Rohan. Mr. Rohan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Richard Rohan from Precinct 2. Capital planning can correct me on this if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I believe that there was a traffic project, maybe Westland Avenue request that went to capital planning and was not funded this cycle. And so I would question spending money on further engineering studies for traffic when we don't have adequate funding to go forward with the projects that we've already had engineering studies on.
Thank you, Mr. Rohan. Further in the question, John Miller. Mr. Miller.
I, I would just urge, I, I have implicit trust in the Police Department, Jay Gill, as to the, you know, the, how the town roads are operating, Fire Department and the Town Engineer. They're the professionals. They, they can, to me, they, they should be, have primary responsibility for issues across the town. And I, I understand people want to, individuals want to be on T-TAC and stuff. I get that. We're on Westland Avenue. I, I do not squeak a lot, but we have a lot of cars going around here pretty, we've had accidents. But all of us, that, that's true. I, I think the, the same thing to do are professionals. And, you know, I have implicit trust in the Police Department, the Fire Department, DPW, and the Town Engineer. So these are, these are funds in search of projects, and I think it's back.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Further in the question, Ms. Von Maring on Article 16.
I was just looking for clarity as well as T-TAC has a, it's my understanding, T-TAC has a kind of a plan of where they're going and what they're looking at. So the request is from the Select Board. Is the $55,000 then going to a T-TAC to manage? I'm, I'm just unclear. Or is the Select Board managing it with T-TAC's advisory? And then my next question was, is, and those projects, what is the means for funding them thereafter?
Mr. Betancourt, in response to the Town Meeting member and Chair of the Planning Board's questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Ms. Von Maring. So, yes, these will be coming from T-TAC recommendations on projects. So the, and to Mr. Miller's question as well, we have the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee that is residents that also Ms. Rudolph facilitates. And then also the Town Traffic Review Committee, which is made up of Jay Gill, Beth Rudolph, Town Staff, the Police Safety Officer. So it's really a way for that connection to be made on priority projects. I mean, we, we need this money, honestly, for a lot of the small projects that we do. This is not a slush fund for the Select Board to use on, you know, building bridges. It's a, it's a stepping stone to move projects into the capital queue later on. And it, as, as you know, it takes a long time to move something through the capital queue. And there are a lot larger needs with a lot larger projects. These are smaller projects that are facilitated by this money.
Thank you, Mr. Betancourt. Further in the question, Ms. Filio. Helen, you're on mute there. If you could help us some. There you go. You're off and on for a second. Helen, if you could unmute yourself.
I thought I did. How's that? Is that better?
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
My question was, and I think I heard the answer just now, how does this process differ from our capital planning process? Because we get projects that we look at and we fund as much as we can fund with, with the amount of money we have. But I'm not quite sure with this $55,000, why we need it.
Thank you, Ms. Filio. And I think, Mr. Betancourt, you addressed that in part in your last response. If you could just.
Clarify for me, please.
Clarify for Ms. Filio. We'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ms. Filio, yeah, this, this money facilitates studies for projects down the road, but also smaller projects that we need to get done in neighborhoods. So it's really money that's coming out of the trap, projects that are coming out of the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee, which is resident-based, and we'll get an application that's emailed to us through our website that residents will draw a picture of the issue they have. And oftentimes, we can handle that on our own. So we can move very quickly on smaller projects, make the area safe, and, and then dispense it, dispense with it outside of the capital process. But it also informs us of different areas in town that we may need to do other work. So I know I'm talking a lot. I apologize.
Mr. Moderator, could, could I ask, could I make a comment, please?
Certainly, Ms. Filio.
Somebody mentioned the Westland Avenue project. I will tell you that we, we had a lot of projects on our, on our, our list this year, and we went down as far as we could with funding. But the Westland Avenue is not done. It's just a question of available funding. There were some huge projects this year, which really took chunks out of, out of our budget. But, you know, all these projects are important. The same thing with the Ridge Street. That's, that's, it's another big one. But they have to be addressed. That's, that's, it's another big one, but they have to be addressed. I would agree.
Thank you very much.
I live on Westland Avenue, so I know how busy it is.
Thank you very much, Ms. Filio. We appreciate that. Mr. Grenzaback, the last speaker on Article 16. Mr. Grenzaback. Lance, you're on mute there.
Good. Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members, thank you. Yes, you can make, do, you can put, put small projects in place with this kind of money,
Article 16 passes. This brings us to Article 17, which is the Report of the Capital Planning Committee,
but the greater value to the town is to prime the pump for state grants.
presented to us this evening by Jimmy Johnson, the Chair of that committee.
You need two days of consulting experience.
Good evening, everybody.
You can purchase that. You can put together a grant to the state when they go out for offering money.
On behalf of the Capital Planning Committee, I am pleased to present the FY22 Capital
In recent years, we've pulled down as much as $400,000 by being able to put together
Planning Committee Report. I hope you've had a chance to read it.
a convincing proposal specifying that we have problems and having a certified engineer,
It's great reading. We are asking tonight for your support in our capital process.
licensed engineer certify that in fact it's a real problem.
As you are aware, this is the second capital planning cycle since the town voted to increase
That's the value of this money. It's soft money. It's not going to be redoing an entire road.
capital budget funding.
It's the leverage that that gives the town to be able to respond and pull down other
Thank you to everybody involved. It's made a difference. As you look around town, you will see the positive results of the additional funding.
people's money, not town voters' money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grenzaback. The motion comes before the Town Meeting as previously presented by the Chair on Page
Reconstruction of bridges, roads, sidewalks, traffic improvements, ADA improvements,
20 of the Fall Town Meeting booklet brought by the Select Board. A majority vote is required.
building repairs and replacement of rolling stock and equipment.
All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no.
And you know, there'll be many other projects you don't see that aren't visible, but they're
V voter screen, 30 seconds.
getting done. It is vital to maintain our physical asset. It is capital's responsibility to see that these projects are brought forward. And with your support tonight, and we will be moving them nearer to completion. Tonight in the FY22 capital budget, we are still proposing construction projects, roads, sidewalks, buildings, traffic improvements and equipment replacement. But in this FY22 budget, we are also including several projects that will be requesting funds for engineering, design and planning. These requests are the Morocco Culvert Project 10. As you're aware, this is the last of a 20-year planning and construction cycle. We ask and hope that you'll support this. We're also asking for funding for the Morocco School, which we are now referring to as the Morocco School Life Extension Project. This request will be for roof and electrical investigation, schematic design and plannings. We are also asking for design and engineering money to improve Fire Department building, both of them, transfer station, DPW yard, McCall Middle School facade and downtown Winchester improvements. We also believe the reconstruction of the North Reservoir is very important to all of us, to one, maintain the water supply and to address the safety at the dam and for the residents of our town. Following, in the following articles, Roger and Chris will outline in detail all the capital items we are presenting tonight. Thank you for support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Article 17, which is simply to accept the report of the Capital Planning Committee. The Chair will entertain a voice vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. This brings us to Article 18. Under Article 18, brought by the Capital Planning Committee, there are two motions. Motion number one appears on Page 22 of the Fall Town Meeting booklet. Under motion number one, it's moved and seconded that $988,750 be appropriated from the Building Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts 2002 for the following projects. The projects, line items numbered one through six, are set forth with particularity in the motion and are as set forth in the written materials. On behalf of the Planning Committee, the proponents, Mr. McPeak.
As the Chair mentioned in the Capital Planning Report, we're recommending a dozen different projects for funding at this Town Meeting. Five minutes is too short to go into detail about each of the projects here, so I'd like to point you to the Capital Planning Report, which has more information on each of these projects. Under motion one, funded through the Building Stabilization Fund, the first project is what we are referring to as the Morocco School Life Extension Program. The objective of that program is to ensure that Morocco remains a high-quality learning environment for our kids until its eventual replacement. To do that, we intend to invest in the school now, both to maximize the return of those investments and to possibly avoid being forced into making major repairs just a few short years before the school's replacement. This past summer, an engineering review was completed of the school that looked at its structure and its systems. And this evening, we're asking for engineering funds for the first two highest priority projects out of that review. And that is the replacement of the roof and replacement of the electrical systems. There will be more projects to come under this program. The second item is a bundle of projects under, for fire safety buildings that include renovation of the West Side Kitchen and Common Area that is original to the 1970s construction of that building. Also included are HVAC renovations for both that building and the Public Safety Building on the fire side. There's also a key card entry system and external security cameras for that building. The third item on the list is engineering work for replacement of the Town Hall HVAC system. That system's approaching 30 years old and has become a constant source of maintenance issues for us. The fourth item is the main entrance to the McCall Middle School, which has those lovely columns, and it is original to the building's commissioning as a high school over 80 years ago. During that time, the columns and some of the cornices have developed cracks. The copper flashing that's behind it has pulled away from the building in places, allowing water infiltration. And this study will allow us to understand exactly what we need to do to restore that entrance. The fourth item is for replacement of carpeting in the Town Hall basement. The slab down there allows moisture to infiltrate up and we've developed mold in the carpet over time. And this project will take up the carpeting, lay down a moisture barrier on that slab to prevent further moisture infiltration and then replace the flooring. The last item on this list is for engineering work for construction of covered structures in the Public Works Department in the area where the old stable buildings were. This will enable us to move more of our equipment and vehicles undercover in and out of the weather. Motion two, funded by the Capital Stabilization Project and a bit of free cash. The first item is for 100% engineering and design and permitting work on Project 10 of the flood mitigation program begun 20 years ago in the town. This is also referred to as the Morocco Culvert. Completion of these engineering diagrams and permitting will get us out to a point where we can go to bid on that project. The next item is a Select Board request for a downtown business district plan. This will look at things like recent changes in intersections, changes, changes in parking, the expansion of outdoor dining, traffic flows, pedestrian flows, things like that. And we'll come up with a guiding plan for improvements in the downtown business district. The next item refers to the transfer station, which over the summer, you may have heard, the Select Board had a analysis done on how we utilize the transfer station and what improvements could be done there. This provides engineering funds to convert some of the recommendations from that study into, into concrete projects for improving the transfer station. The fourth item on the list is, comes out of Town Meeting funding traffic analysis along Cross Streets and Highland Avenue in the 2018 Town Meeting. This is the first project coming out of that, those studies. The traffic engineers hoping to reduce speeds on Highland Avenue are recommending that we install islands down the centerline of Highland Avenue between Forest Street and Mount Vernon Street. This is engineering for that project. The final two items are replacement of DPW trucks that have reached the end of their useful life, which in Winchester means we've driven them into the ground and need to buy new ones. Finally, if I have, haven't run too long and have a moment or two left, I would like to point out that the two projects that mentioned, that I mentioned Morocco, the Morocco School Life Extension Program and the Morocco Culvert are both beyond the capability of the stabilization funds to support the construction phases of. The Select Board is aware of that and they have been supportive of us bringing these projects together at this time. Those projects will require some source of outside funding, most likely an override. We'd like to thank the Select Board for their support and we would like to ask for your support in these projects at this time as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. McPeak. Just a little bit of planning guidance for the Meeting members. We will conclude our debate on Article 18. And then because we have both the North Dam and the Personnel Report left to us this evening, we will come back on Thursday evening at 7:30 to conclude the Fall Town Meeting by debating those two last substantive matters at that time. Otherwise, we will further extend our violation of Governor Baker's curfew here. Patriots are behind by 10 points to the 0-8 New York Jets. Bob Kraft and his friend President Trump having the same kind of success this fall. Mr. McPeak, thank you very much. On motions one and two, may we have a recommendation from the Select Board?
Select Board recommends favorable action.
And from the Finance Committee, Mr. Roshanado?
Tom also recommends favorable action.
Thank you very much. So on motion number one, further in the question is previously presented by the Chair and supported by the proponents, Capital Planning Committee, through the comments of Mr. McPeak, two-thirds motion required. All those in favor of motion number one, please go to your V voter screen. Those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Balloting will be open for 30 seconds. 155 members of the meeting having voted in the affirmative, two in the negative, 157 members of the Town Meeting having voted, 105 required for passage. Article 18 passes. Motion number one under Article 18 passes. This brings us to motion number two under Article 18. Motion number two under Article 18 appears on Page 23 of the Fall Town Meeting booklet. Under motion number two, it's moved and seconded that $785,000 be appropriated, of which $50,906 is from free cash, $734,094 is from Capital Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts 2002 for the following projects. The projects are as set forth on line items one through six on Page 23 and as otherwise written there. Mr. McPeak has spoken to motion number two already. The Select Board and the Finance Committee have also conveyed their support for favorable action on motion number two. Further in the question, motion number two presented by the Capital Planning Committee, two-thirds vote required. All those in favor, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. Please go to your V voter screen where balloting will be open for 30 seconds. 155 members of the meeting having voted in the affirmative, two in the negative, 157 members of the Town Meeting having voted, 105 required for passage. Article 18 passes. Motion number one under Article 18 passes. This brings us to motion number two under Article 18. Motion number two under Article 18 appears on Page 23 of the Fall Town Meeting booklet. Under motion number two, it's moved and seconded that $785,000 be appropriated, of which $50,906 is from free cash, $734,094 is from Capital Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts 2002 for the following projects. The projects are as set forth on line items one through six on Page 23 and as otherwise written there. Mr. McPeak has spoken to motion number two already. The Select Board and the Finance Committee have also conveyed their support for favorable action on motion number two. Further in the question, motion number two presented by the Capital Planning Committee, two-thirds vote required. All those in favor, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. Please go to your V voter screen where balloting will be open for 30 seconds.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure, in one second. Under Article 18, motion number two, 152 having voted in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion passes unanimously under motion number two. Stacy, yes?
Just a point of clarification, because we have two funding sources and six items, I just wanted to make sure that we identify which item is going to be funded with free cash and which one is funded with the Capital Stabilization Fund. Because if the projects close with balances, we just need to know where to return the money. So I'm not sure if that matters in the vote, but it just matters from an accounting standpoint.
It does not matter in the vote because the motion included the allocations from the Town Meeting from free cash and Capital Stabilization Fund. But the Chair is cognizant of the point that you're making. The Chair asks that the Finance Committee and the Select Board, Mr. Roshanado, Mr. Bettencourt, consult with Mr. McPeak and that they, working with Ms. Ward, make a recommendation to the meeting as to what those allocations should be. To the extent a further and clarifying vote is necessary, we will conduct that at the next meeting. So we have remaining for consideration, the Capital Planning Committee request for some $6 million, $50,000 for improvements to the North Reservoir Dam. Article 21, which has come off the consent agenda and involves the revolving field account. We have some allocations from the Finance Committee in Article 25. And then the report of the Personnel Board are the substantive matters left for us as the Chair indicated earlier. We are not at 10:30, who won't be able to complete those this evening. We will adjourn until 7:30 on Thursday, November 12. And we will, with the assistance of our friends here, be able to maintain your same passwords for next week. So we will eliminate one moment of confusion there. So the motion comes before the meeting to adjourn the meeting until Thursday, November 12th at 7:30 PM. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. We will see you on Thursday night at 7:30, same platforms, V voter and Zoom. Thank you very much.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You have just seen Winchester's Fall Town Meeting, second session here on November 9. I'm Alan Idon here at the WinCam Studios. So let's do a recap of what we have seen tonight or what has happened tonight, if you weren't watching. So here's our recap. We started with Article 11, which was a continuation of the discussion that began on, on last Thursday night. And this was involving restriction of mechanical landscaping hours. And there was a lot of discussion on this, which would restrict commercial landscaping operations to certain hours, but not operations by owners on their own property. There was a lot of discussion about leaf blowers. And again, this was continued from last Thursday, but a lot of Town Meeting members found the wording confusing. There were some questions about whether a relative of a property owner, for instance, a grandchild of a, of parents, grandparents who own property. of a parent, grandparents who own property, whether they could come over outside the hours. And then there were questions about whether they were being compensated or not being compensated. And in the end, too many town member, town meeting members found it confusing, and the whole article was indefinitely postponed by a vote of 88 to 65, possibly to come back in a spring town meeting reworded. So that was Article 11. We moved on to Article 13. So Article 13 was a proposal for the town to lease the Waterfield Parking Lot. That's the parking lot just next to the common where the Chamber of Commerce building is, Chamber of Commerce office is located. So the town was to lease that for 99 years to a developer for an affordable housing project, rental housing project of 60 units, of which 25 would be affordable, and some, some limited commercial use on Waterfield. That proposal by a company called Civico was chosen. It would include 85 parking spaces. We heard that it would potentially add 35 to 40 students to the Winchester school system. There were nine proposals received, and Civico was chosen. Final approval of the project, we saw some renderings of the project, but final approval of the project and zoning would be for next spring's town meeting. So Article 13 passed by a vote of 151 to 10. So Article, again, it was taken out of order, so we went back to Article 12. Article 12 was a similar article, except it was to purchase the land at the corner of Washington and Swanton Streets. Currently, for about the past 10 years, that those properties have been vacant and boarded up. There have been proposals, but apparently they've all fallen through to develop the property. So this was a, an article for the town to actually buy the property, vet the development of the property, and then sell it to a developer. So that was to acquire the parcel. There are several parcels there along Washington Street and Swanton Street for up to $3,150,000, which apparently is the assessed value of that property. It would be sold to a developer for mixed use, which would include affordable housing. The town would seek developers, as they did for the Waterfield Lot, and there would also need to be some zoning changes there. We heard some of the background of this was the town, again, needs to create affordable housing, that the affordable housing stock in Winchester is about 1.5%. There needs to be a, what they call, safe haven, which the town needs to produce at least 40 new units a year of affordable housing toward a goal of 10% affordable housing in town, to ward off what they call hostile 40B housing developments. And those are projects in which a developer can come in and make a project much larger and inconsistent with the, the current zoning. The state allows them to override the existing zoning and create rather large projects. And there are some of those on, on the, on the horizon for the town. So this is a, an effort to create more affordable housing, which would be in the Waterfield Lot and also in this, to create, keep this safe haven where the town can ward off these projects. The proposals would be up to 50 units for this, this site. The Affordable Housing Trust will fund. It is consistent with the master plan that we heard. The Planning Board opposed it, though, and said, in their words, it needed more planning. There was a motion, this, the motion, the article contained the possibility of acquiring the property through purchase or by eminent domain. So we heard a motion to strike the words eminent domain from the article. That did fail by a vote of 46 to 121, so they moved forward with the article. We heard from the Select Board, remember, Michael Betancourt, saying that this taking, taking the project would be in the public interest, again, purchasing or taking it and creating more affordable housing. Town meeting member Rich Mucci said was absolutely the right move by the Select Board, and the article did pass by a vote of 130 to 35. Article 14 was an appropriation, a request for appropriation of $240,000 for the town's share for improvements to the train station. Now, as you probably know, the Winchester Train Station is scheduled to be completely renovated by the MBTA, a project that's, they're spending approximately $50 million on that station. Construction is slated to begin in the spring. This appropriation was for some of the improvements that the MBTA would not be paying for, such as preserving and restoring the stone cladding on the, on the viaduct, on the, on the Lauerway roadside, and an irrigation system for new plantings that'll be planted along by the common. That passed by 153 to 5. Article 15 was to, for the town to accept a general, Massachusetts general law that would pay public employees while performing their military service, such as National Guard duty, for a maximum of 40 days in a fiscal year. We did hear that only one current employee would be affected by this. That was, that was passed by a vote of 155 to 1. Article 16 was for $55,000 for traffic studies, a fund for traffic studies. It was taken off the consent agenda, which was, again, if you watched this on Thursday night, there was a consent agenda that took quite a few of the articles in which no debate was anticipated and passed them all by one vote. However, five town meeting members can ask that a, something in the consent agenda be taken off and be debated and voted on separately, and that was the case here. The Select Board wanted to reserve money for quick actions for traffic, traffic problems without going back to capital planning. The Finance Committee opposed that and said it should be using reserve funds. But the Select Board felt that traffic is a quality of life issue for the residents, and there were some issues that need to be urgently and quickly addressed. That was passed. The $55,000 on Article 16 was passed by a vote of 115 to 34. Article 17 was to receive the report of the Capital Planning Committee. Article 18, which we just finished discussing, had two motions in it, $988,750 to be appropriated from the Building Stabilization Fund for such projects as what they call the Morocco School Life Extension Projects, because the Morocco School needs to be replaced, but probably won't be replaced for at least another 10 years. These were urgently needed projects at the school to extend its life until it could be replaced. Also, improvements to the fire department, both buildings, the, the West Side Station and the Main Station, some work at the Town Hall, some work on the masonry at the front of the McCall Middle School, and replacement for the stables that were demolished at the Department of Public Works Yard to restore some covered areas for the equipment of the DPW. That passed by 155 to 2. And the last item was $785,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for engineering studies for flood mitigation project at Morocco, downtown business district improvements, Highland Avenue traffic improvements, and two trucks for the DPW. And that, again, was also passed by town meeting. So there will be one more session of town meeting this Thursday, November 12, which should wrap up the business. Should be a relatively short session. There's a Personnel Report coming and a major appropriation of over $6 million for replacement of a dam at the North Reservoir. So those two are the two main articles left to be discussed on Thursday. So we are wrapping up here at 10:37, again, with the virtual town meeting. And we'll be, we will be back on Thursday night to cover the wrap-up of Winchester's Fall Town Meeting. So we thank you for joining us. Hopefully, our wrap-ups here are useful to those of you who were not able to watch all the town meeting sessions. So all of us here at Wind Cam, I'm Alan Idon. Have a great night.